I hope that's not me. Ding.
Your husband will go on?
Good evening and welcome to the February 13th, 2018, regular city council meeting. Before we begin the meeting, let me review, let me remind you that this is a business meeting of the city council, therefore clapping, cheering, and outbursts are not permitted. Speakers must complete a request to speak form located at the entrance to the city, at the council chamber. Submit your completed form to either the city clerk or the sergeant-at-arms. When your name has been called, use the microphone at the lectern on the audience's right and state your name and address. If you do not wish to publicly state your street address, you may state only your city or unincorporated Brevard County. Speak to city council as a body; do not address the mayor and city council members individually. Be mindful of the timer at the front of the room and wrap up your comments before your speaking time ends. The following time limits will generally apply; speaking times may be varied by the mayor with the approval of city council. Public comments, most agenda items, and the consent agenda, up to three minutes. Items designated as a public hearing and petitions, remonstrances, and communications, up to five minutes. An applicant, representative, or person who has legal standing to support or oppose a quasi-judicial matter will be permitted enough time as reasonably determined by the city council to create a record before the city council. These matters generally include site plan, plat, zoning of property, conditional use, variance, building-related permit or appeal, abandon and vacate requests, annexation, and other applications of law to specific properties. Thank you for joining us this evening, and we'll begin the invocation with council member Teresa Lopez, and if you wish to participate in the invocation, please stand. Please bow your heads.
Almighty God and Father, we worship you; we give you thanks for all you do for us and for the safety of our communities. As we come together and bow our heads and open this meeting with this prayer, we come to ask you for your blessing on this meeting and for your wisdom to guide us as we seek to accomplish the goals for today's agenda. Thank you for the opportunities to serve you and to serve the residents of this great city. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, council member Teresa Lopez. Enjoy me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item A3, roll call, Ms. Weiser.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Debbie Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Alfred.
Here.
Vice Mayor Minus.
Here.
Mayor Meehan.
Here.
Item number A4, proclamations and presentations, I have none tonight. A5, approval of the minutes of the January 23rd, 2018, regular meeting. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Lopez.
So moved.
Second. All right, I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January 23rd, 2018, regular meeting by Ms. Lopez, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion, seeing none. This is going to require, well, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item A6, city manager's report, Mr. McNeese, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing on the manager's report I'll add a note to, just, it's already in here in the written report, but you may not understand exactly what we're trying to say. You'll recall that when you went through the grants and aid award some two or three months ago, one of the organizations that actually, I don't think they had even made the actual submittal deadline exactly, came in and made a request for some money. It was an organization called The Masters Workshop, and they had an issue with their fence that had been blown down by Hurricane Irma, and you granted them a $2,500 grant to replace their fence. Well, they contacted staff later and said that, I think it was Lowe's, had agreed to put their fence back for free, and as a support of the organization, could they use that money for something else, perhaps, playground equipment? I also heard something about computers.
Computers.
And we suggested to them that, no, we didn't feel like at the staff level we would have that discretion to just tell them they could use that money for something else. If they wanted to make a request like that, they could come to city council and ask you. And I just wanted you to be aware of that because there'd been quite a bit of discussion involving that organization here, and to let you know what we'd told them at the staff level, and that we haven't heard that I'm aware of anything from them since then, but just in case you hear something about that, I wanted you to know what the circumstances were.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. McNeese? All right, seeing none. Item number seven is public comments, and do I have any sign-up sheets? All right, thank you, Ms. Weiser. Okay, first is Patricia Nichols.
Hello, everyone. I'm here about the mural.
Okay, Patricia, just name and city.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patricia Nichols, Melbourne, Florida.
Very good.
I am here about the infamous mural, and my attitude towards it is mostly technical. We have guidelines in the city and rules, and the board, the architectural and, the architectural and historical board, I said it backwards, went ahead and approved this before it should have been approved, because what happened was, they actually submitted an application, and then without authority went ahead and actually painted it. And of course, once it's painted, that presents a problem for the city. What do we do now? Well, the board decided to approve it. But the board, in my opinion, well, let me finish first. That's one thing they did, but the other thing that they did is not follow some of the regulations that were set out for them. And there's a dispute on one of them. Some say, well, it's original art. I say it isn't because it's cartoons that everybody knows who they are, and how original is that? Anyone can take a cartoon and do what they want with it, but this guy must hate cartoons because he made those little guys in horrible things, doing horrible things. But one of the rules is that the mural must be appropriate for all age groups or types of people. I don't have it in front of me, but it isn't. I don't find it acceptable, and I'm certainly sure little kids would not be happy to see their favorite little guys in terrible positions and situations. So I would say that that board broke a couple of rules of the city. They should have turned it down as soon as it had not been approved, and then found out that there were rules that they broke. And I think this is a city problem now, because if you approve that, then you're complicit with them in not even approving and taking care of the rules that you set up in the first place. So I say it's more important to get rid of that, and of course, I'm not in favor of that in the first place, and I'm just going to pass out something to you all.
Hand it to me, I'll hand them down if you want.
All right, so council, if it's agreeable, I am going to allow the speakers to speak, all right? And then we are going to allow the city attorney to respond before we have any conversation, okay? Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Next is Marcia Drabich.
Okay, my name is Marcia Drabich, and I'm a Melbourne resident, and I'm here to speak in objection to the mural on O'Gally, west of US1, a mural whose subject matter has no connection to our city. Pursuant to Harb's guidelines, which I gave you copies of, murals are supposed to be original artwork. I don't think they are, and I've addressed that by writing to the studios in question, asking them to protect their intellectual property and take legal action. That's a matter for another day, but I wanted to disclose that to you all, that I did that. The guidelines say that the mural shall be appropriate visual imagery for all audiences and appropriate design for the view of the mural's intended audience. When you look at the mural, you see Pepe Le Pew pinching a decaying SpongeBob, Hello Kitty without eyes surrounded by brain matter, a floating eyeball, and bone shards, then a robot arm, and Homer Simpson both grabbing Daffy Duck while Homer Simpson is being attacked with a fork by Wile E. Coyote. Finally, Felix the Cat is missing an eye and being killed in a burning building. This is on large public display. Do we want our children emulating the kind of vile behavior this mural glorifies? This giant eye sword doesn't do anything to enhance our city's image; it undermines it. As you see, this piece is entirely different from what was originally approved, which you have both, the original approval and what they painted. So why didn't the applicant get a new permit? Unlike the approved version, this mural erected illegally depicts all kinds of violence, rampant bullying, killing, and death emblazoned on a 30-by-100 wall on one of our major thoroughfares. Over 16,000 cars travel that stretch of O'Gally every day, and since the Harb guideline requires appropriateness, and appropriate means suitable, fitting, and proper, Harb hasn't even met their own guidelines of appropriate visual imagery for all audiences. Since the O'Gally Art District didn't have the proper permission for this mural, they had already completed, they came to that meeting and basically asked forgiveness. Why does Harb even have guidelines if they have no intention of honoring them? With all these murals, Melbourne has a unique opportunity to project an uplifting, positive coastal message to our community as a whole and to the visitors we welcome to our businesses and beaches. Let's not tarnish that with this one monstrous, violent, damaging display. Also, it's been suggested that the store owner across from the mural file an appeal, but I think it's unfair for the city to ask one person to take the heat when this is something the city should correct. If an appeal needs to be filed, it should be done by the city manager as per the appeals guidelines. I also gave you that. So I am here to ask you as our representatives who speak on behalf of our city as a whole to fix this, because to summarize, the mural was not properly permitted, and it's not suitable for all audiences. Please recognize the error of Harb's decision in this instance and hold them accountable for this breach of our public trust. Overturn their approval of this distasteful mural so it can be replaced by something appropriate and respectful to our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jim Nichols.
Good evening, council. Thank you for taking a minute to listen to me. I'm on the same topic. In a nutshell, the mural didn't meet the guidelines, which everybody's already said, and what I would ask is any kindergarten teacher, go review that mural. Go to their class and see if they would represent that in a kindergarten class. I really, really doubt it. It's inappropriate. Beautiful artwork, but totally inappropriate for little kids to look at. First point, I feel it's going to be a detriment to the neighborhood in that area. I believe because it's so big and bold and ugly, that it will bring down the values of the homes and businesses in that area. I think that this artwork is fine on a carnival, carnival ride, or a carnival funhouse. It would be excellent, but on a public, major road in O'Gally, I think it's inappropriate. Thank you for your time; I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next is Lisa Elaine from Atlantic Furniture.
Good evening. I am Lisa Elaine Jaskowski. I own Atlantic Furniture in Melbourne. I am directly across the street, probably 100 feet, maybe even less, from this mural. So obviously, I have the same opinions and feelings as everybody else here, but I'm going to tell this council, what I went through as a business, when we stood up and said, no, this isn't acceptable, this does not belong in the city, because this does not belong in our city, all right? We were just torn apart through social media. We had people calling us on the phone, threatening us. My nine years of working so hard, five-star reviews, are all but gone now because of a bunch of people who liked the mural. So who was it? Well, it was Matt Gondis, 170,000 Instagram followers, where he put on one of his posts, which we have, there's a furniture company in Melbourne who does not like my mural, and they're looking to take it down. So here went all the chatting on everybody what they could do, and it was one girl who said, hey, let's go, let's go to the social media pages, and here they came. Well, let me tell you what, I'm not used to violence, and those people are as violent as that mural is violent, okay? What we endured, we should have never had to endure. I should not be standing here today. That mural should have never been endured. And the minute that Harb gave them approval for the second one, that was ridiculous, because I'm going to tell you what, when Harb was there, by the time, and I hope I get a little bit more time, because I'm really angry, okay? We had every intention in the world to go into that Harb meeting, my daughter, my husband, my son, we're a family business. My grandbabies come to that store. Now I got to keep them away because I'm afraid of what kind of nut is going to walk in my building. But we were going to go to the meeting, Florida Today calls us up and says, well, they're probably going to get a continuance tonight. By then, me and Amber Lee were so afraid, Bill was down south doing an estimate and couldn't make it back in time, and there was no way I was going to take my daughter, knowing that the artist was calling out all these people to come to this meeting and, you know, tell them how wonderful this art is. I wasn't going to walk into that position, but what I did expect, guys, is I expected Harb to say, you know what, oh, oops, you put up the wrong mural. This is unacceptable, and we need to do something about it. That's what should have been done. Now I get this paper that says to me, okay, Lisa, you're directly affected. Well, you betcha I am directly affected, okay? I don't like the mural. I have my feelings about it, and I still stand on the same. It doesn't belong in the city. So now, why do I have to be the one? Again, you know, I'll probably be all in the newspapers tomorrow to get my business slandered, because we've done good business, my family, through the years. We're good people. Go read the other reviews. Read past the, oh, they hate art, one star. Well, we hate art so much that I allow the local, talented artists to come in my store, hang their pictures, and do you know I don't charge them a dime? That's how much I hate art, okay? So I hate that art. So let me tell you what, guys, we got to think, you know, I keep getting messages, come Friday. I'm busy with my business. My focus should be on my business and my family, not on that mural, and I think it is up to the city to deal with this, not me, guys. Don't do this to me. I can't take anymore. I have enough stress in my life. I don't need to be slandered on social media, have the phone calls. I mean, we're still getting ringing and hanging up. It's just ridiculous, and it should have, like I said, should have never, ever, ever happened. And let me tell you what, when a city deviates from their rules, wait until you guys, I'm telling you, I did the research, some of these artists are in their own league, all right? Freedom of expression. So now that, if you leave this one up there, somebody else is going to come along and say, oh, well, you got that one, and now I want this one. Well, let me tell you what this city's going to look like, and it ain't going to be paying a pretty picture. So that's all I can say, and I really appreciate you guys hearing, but please, have a heart, all right? I didn't deserve this, my business didn't deserve this, you know? I worked too hard for those five stars, so it's on you guys.
All right.
All right?
Thank you. Next is Amber Lee Hamel.
Hello, everybody. I am Amber Hamel. I'm actually the co-owner of Atlantic Furniture. That was just my mom, but I know. But anyways.
All right, ma'am, you live where?
In Melbourne.
What city?
Melbourne.
Okay, all right, very good.
Uh huh. I am directly affected by this mural also. I just want to just verify this real quick. The information that either Marcia or Tricia passed out is actually a mural that this artist did in Los Angeles of our president, Donald Trump. He actually has a melting face in this mural that he did, a broken leg, money flying everywhere, and he's melting. It's pretty graphic, but anyways, this is the type of art that we are supporting. This is what we're allowing to happen with this artist who came into our city, okay? It doesn't matter what your political affiliation is, no matter what, this, if, I don't know if you can see it, this is disrespectful. This is uncalled for, and this is the type of nonsense that is going to send our future generations down a very, very terrible path. So this is what we're allowing in our community, disrespect and violence, which is not okay. Second of all, as an artist myself, I'm a landscape artist, I have visited numerous of arts districts, anywhere from South Florida and the Keys all the way to Stockholm, Sweden. I've traveled quite a bit of the world, and I've seen beautiful arts districts. Every single thing that arts districts have in common is they have art that is meant for everybody, not just one particular group. This is the type of art that, if you like it, maybe it should be in your living room. This is not suitable visual imagery for all audiences and ages. My five-year-old nephew came into my store and said, oh, Ann, Amber, what happened to SpongeBob? Who knocked out his eye? Why's he got brains everywhere? And the kid's five. This is not acceptable, and the type of people who support this painting, you know, everybody has opinions, but the type of people who support this painting have been the same people who have called us screaming into the phone, I hope your business fails. We've been sworn at, we've been slandered across social media. These are the type of people that are supporting this painting. And for the rest of you, if you haven't seen this painting, maybe you guys should drive by it and take a good, hard look at it, because it really does take a little bit of, you really got to look at it to see what's going on, it's really quite busy. But we really need to take a third look at this thing and say, hey, this doesn't belong in our area, first of all, and second of all, we want something that is suitable for everybody, not just a good 10% of our population. So your reconsideration is so important, so we would really ask if you'd take another look at this thing. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. All right, so I'm going to, I don't have any more sign-up sheets, so I will turn it over to Ms. Dolly. Wait a minute, you're out of order. All right, so Ms. Dolly.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city code does actually provide an appellate process, as suggested by one of the speakers. It's an unusual one in that first, the first level of review is to the planning and zoning board, but the second level of review actually comes to city council. That's very unusual for most of the decisions, but because of that, there is, if this decision is appealed, there is a chance that this board, this council, will be the panel that has to evaluate the law applied on this particular fact pattern, and that you'd be sitting in your quasi-judicial capacity, and for that reason, of course, as you know, due process requires that you provide a fair hearing to both sides, and for that reason, it's important that you don't weigh in on whether the mural is appropriate or not appropriate. If the item is appealed up to the city council level, then you'll be provided some information about how the First Amendment plays a part in how we evaluate content-based signs, but until then, I just want to caution that any conversation that you might engage in, you don't want to jeopardize your standing as being impartial. There are a couple of things that I would like to do, actually, with our city code. One of them is I'd like to personally modify city code to take the city council out of that appellate process, so that it reflects the other types of decisions that are heard on appeal in the city, and with your permission, I'll start that process and modify any appeal process so it would go to planning and zoning, and then straight into the court system. But again, until that modification is made, you have to preserve the impartiality of this board when they're looking at this particular fact pattern. So I'm just looking direction, looking for direction. And the other thing to keep in mind is, this is not a new issue for the city of Melbourne, believe it or not. Back in 2001, there was a decision, it had to do with a site plan review, and one of the council members at that time took a very proactive position on whether the development should go forward or not before the hearing, and that decision, that the site plan was denied, that decision was appealed up to the circuit court, and that council member was reprimanded by the judge for being partial, and they had to disqualify themselves from consideration in that matter. It's a very serious position to put the city in. So I would just urge you to keep in mind that you have to remain impartial. I am happy at your direction to revise city code to make that appellate process go directly into the court system from P and Z, and to the extent you do engage, the courts would expect you to disqualify yourself from partaking in any kind of discussion or vote on the issue if it does come to you.
Okay. Ms. Dolly, so if it, we know it's going to go to planning and zoning, so.
No, actually, they have until Friday to appeal the decision, and no appeal has yet been filed.
Can city council give that direction to take it to planning and zoning? Or do we have to have?
No.
No.
This is what makes this awkward. So the code provides that the appeal can be brought by an interested person, such as the business owner, as she indicated, or by the city manager. The city manager would not typically take this type of action unless they're directed to do so by city council, but city council can't really give that direction because you're impartial. It's very circular. That's one reason why I'd like to see that process modified, so it goes right from P and Z into the courts to give you the flexibility to direct the city manager to challenge. As it stands now, I am concerned that any discussion or direction from council to the city manager would be read by the courts as being impartial.
Okay. So Lisa Elaine, you have until Friday to file for the appeal, so I would recommend that if that's what you want to do, that would be the direction to go, all right?
Madam Mayor.
All right.
Mayor.
Ms. Lopez, and then Mr. Thomas.
I just wanted to say that I'd rather get away from going to the court on what she wants to do. I think this is our city, and we should decide what is going to be allowed in our city and not go to the courts on this. That's how I feel.
And I apologize, I didn't make it clear. What would happen is they appeal to P and Z, then to city council, and from there, they go to the courts. So it doesn't eliminate the review by the court, it's just whether it has to come to city council first.
Right, and so if it comes to city council first, and we decide that, for whatever reason, I'm not saying it's going to happen, we decide to change this.
Yes.
The only reason it should go to the court is what?
Is if the owner of the building wants to keep the mural, and he could appeal the decision back up to the court.
Okay, but as long as we make the decision, that's all I care about.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
You know, I went back and I looked at the minutes from that Harb meeting, and the thing that just really bothers me is we have a process, we have a processing problem with this board, and again, the guidelines are in there as far as what should be approved, and that's, they're kind of like the gatekeepers for the city, for the residents, for the city council on what goes up on these walls. They are the gatekeepers. But even if you look at all of the folks and all the artists that came forward to get their art approved, just about nine out of 10 of them, nine out of 10 of them, they didn't, they didn't actually paint what they came to the board to get approved first. That's wrong. So they have to follow their own guidelines, so if there's a standard, okay, you come to the board to get approval, okay, here's a picture of what I'm, here's a picture of what I'm going to put up on the mural, okay? Approved, go do it, okay? Then after it's done, you come back, and then it's something totally different. Why do we even need a Harb for? Okay, and really, what it looks like to me is, it almost looked like these artists, they played the Harb, because, like I said, nine out of 10 of them, or just about every one of them except for one or two, that's what they did. The original. two, that's what they did. The original submission that they gave to the Harb for approval was totally different than what they put up on the wall. So I don't blame these residents for being here and being upset. And I'm kinda like Teresa, I'm a little ticked off that we were trying to delegate that authority to the courts. That's something that we should deal with as a City Council. If we don't deal with it, what good are we? And so I'm really perturbed. You know what? I'll fully disclose this, if this comes back to a quasi-judicial, I don't care. If it means I have to disqualify myself, I'll do that. But this is wrong, and the city manager, you need to do something about it. This is in your bailiwick. You have the authority, according to this right here, "Appeal. City Manager, any person aggravated or substantially affected greater degree or difficulty than the community at large by a ruling of the Architectural Review Board in its decision on an application for a certificate of architectural appropriateness in the Melbourne Downtown Community Redevelopment Area, the Babcock Street Community Redevelopment Area, and the Oldagally Riverfront Community Redevelopment Area shall have the option to appeal the decision of the Architectural Review Board to the Planning and Zoning Board." Sir, you have the authority to do that. And again, our country is in the midst of a cultural war right now that impacts us on a daily basis through social media, the entertainment industry, mainstream media, and through professional sports, mainly the NFL. People need places that they can go to relax, escape the political division that's all around us. So let's not ruin one of the few places that people can come to to relax, which is downtown, and let's save, you know, this safe place where people can come down and relax and not have these murals that have political innuendo and acts of violence depicted on them.
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez.
And what I worry about is if the business owner was intimidated, I won't be surprised if the members of that board, the agricultural board, might have been intimidated too. And I'm afraid of that. So I, if it was up to me, as a matter of fact, I would like to direct the city manager to file that, what is it?
Bill.
Yes. I would like to direct him to file, if the rest of the City Council agrees.
All right, so do I have a motion?
Well...
Okay, Mr. Elfry.
You know, I actually kinda took a poll. I went around, I was at, and I asked a lot of people. I said, you know, what do you think about that mural? And a lot of people looked at me and they kinda shook their head and they said, "Why that mural? With the beautiful lagoon we have and the beaches and the space center and how wonderful Melbourne is. Why that mural?" I understand it's art, it's an art form, but the art has to be appropriate to everyone. So I kinda concur with the fact that, you know, this is our decision, and I don't think we need to take anything out of our hands, and if we can get this resolved, you know, we need to do so. And that also being said, as a contractor, if I build a house and it just kinda, you know, it's eight, it's 8,000 square feet, but my building permit says 2,000 square feet, hey, just forget about it. It doesn't work that way. They would tell me, "Tear that down and rebuild it," and that's what they would do. So that's just my thought.
All right. Ms. Thomas.
I just have a question for the attorney. I don't know if I'm misunderstanding this or not. So if this is, if Mr. McNeese is tasked with being the person that's gonna go ahead and bring this, does it then come back to council and it doesn't go any further than that? Or how is that, can you better explain that to me?
Once it's challenged, once the decision is challenged, then it would go to the Planning and Zoning Board, who would review the decision. And from there, it comes to City Council, who would review the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board. And from there, it would go to the court system, who would review the decision of the City Council.
Allison, can I clarify something? Cause I'm not sure it's clear with what you're saying. It would go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and then if someone chooses to appeal the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board, it would come here. It would not automatically come back to this table.
Right.
So now we'd be to the point of, okay, well, what was the decision there? And it could be one of the aggrieved parties tonight. If the Planning and Zoning Board decided the mural was inappropriate, it could be the artist or the building owner appealing, and then it would come here. So it's, and then it would go to the court after you if one of the parties who didn't win decides to appeal. So it's not, there aren't automatic steps. It depends on if somebody chooses to continue to appeal.
I guess, to go along those lines, I'm a little confused because if it did, if it was something that then came back to us, would it be like two sides giving their side? I mean, how would that, how does that work?
As a practical matter, it depends on who challenges the decision of the P and Z Board. So let's just say, for sake of argument, that the decision of Harb was affirmed by P and Z, then whoever appealed the decision to Harb would, could have the opportunity to appeal it to City Council. So if the city manager appealed to Harb and it was affirmed, then he could bring that on up to City Council. It's very awkward.
So when it does come, let's say, let's just say it does get to that point, when it comes to City Council, because we're now supposed to put on those hats of being a judge versus a council member.
You have that hat on right now.
Okay.
You are a judge right now.
Okay, so does that mean the two sides represent themselves at that point when it comes forward? I guess the reason why I'm getting to this question is I personally, I've heard a little bit here and I've heard a little bit there and everything. I've not had a full, you know, description of exactly what's going on in, on each side of it. So at this point, I don't think I could make a decision, and that's my point of, you know, what point will I be satisfied that I could absolutely make that kind of decision?
It is no doubt awkward, especially typically what would happen is you'd have a private party engage an attorney to make their arguments for them, and basically you would have, I guess we would hire outside counsel to make some kind of position on one side or the other. It's really, you're in new territory here.
Okay, so I guess then to go to the other question, what you, how you wanna go ahead and change, would that apply to this or is it too late for it to apply to this?
Well, we've had that discussion in my office, actually, and depending on the timing, we have to do a little bit more research, but I would try to make it apply to this. I don't know that I would be successful. The idea about raising it tonight is that there has been no appeal filed, so there isn't an active case. So I would try to make the argument that we follow the pending legislation, if you gave me that direction. It's, it's an argument.
And I guess one further question, and maybe you can answer this, is why wasn't it set up this way in the beginning?
I don't know, other than to say, I don't know that it was an intentional decision. It appealed to, if you look at the Harb section of code, it says you appeal through Planning and Zoning. I don't know that the dots were connected, that there's another section of code that says that decisions of P and Z are appealed to the City Council. And I don't think that it was realized that this is the process that would follow for just very few, but some decisions.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Thomas and then Ms. Lopez.
Yes, ma'am. And again, we heard from Lisa, the furniture owner, she's scared to death. So she doesn't want to file an appeal because of the impact, what's already been said to Florida today has impacted her business. I mean, these are, these are part of our, these people are part of our community. They pay taxes to Melbourne, business taxes. They're one of our own, and we can't protect them any better than that? Are you kidding me? So again, the way I read this, this is what's currently in play right now with the appeal process, and we need to follow through with this and take the pressure off this business owner and let the city manager file the appeal.
Mayor.
Ms. Lopez.
I agree with Mr. Thomas. I was about to say that pressure the business owner is going through, it's not fair. So I make a motion for the city manager to file the appeal to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
All right, we're in discussion now. So...
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Moore.
I wasn't going to say anything on this, but I am sorry that this puts us in this position when I was sitting at that Harb board meeting. And what Councilman Thomas said was very accurate. When something comes into a board and they present it, and they present it, I'm gonna say the artist presents a drawing that they want to put on one of the walls, and you look at this and they find it not offensive and they approve it. But unfortunately, in some of the instances, there were things that were submitted, I was sitting right there where you're sitting, there are things that were submitted but didn't come to fruition. The artist changed them. And then they came back and basically asked for forgiveness. So as Councilman Elfry said, if he built an 8,000-square-foot house, but his plans only called for 2,000-square-foot house, we have a problem. He has a problem. And unfortunately, this has become our problem. And I think we need some, we need some tighter rules. I'm very uncomfortable being put in this position as to standing as judge, unfortunately. And I'm sure our other council members are feeling, some of us are feeling the can't speak for all, for the same way. But this is an unfortunate situation for our city. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Vice Mayor Minas.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the attorney if she would reiterate about the process here for the city manager versus City Council. I wanna make sure, if you would just go over that again, I'm trying to play it back, so that legally, we're not in any kind of trouble by acting. So that's my concern.
Well, I wish I could give you that assurance. Generally, the procedure is that the decision of Harb can be appealed by either an interested party, such as the business owner across the street, or by the city manager. Typically, not required, but typically, the city manager would not take legal action without the authority of this council, this direction. This is awkward because you have your obligations to be impartial as a quasi-judicial decision-maker. And as such, if you weigh in on whether an appeal should be made, it suggests a level of bias, which arguably, and it would be the obligation of whoever challenges it, to make the argument that you didn't come into the hearing without a bias. So what that looks like and what that does is for the courts to decide, they have a history of when a council member did get involved in pursuing an opposition to a particular quasi-judicial position, they disqualified the council member. When the council makes that decision, I would imagine they would have the same position they've taken in the past and disqualify the council. I don't, I don't know. I think, I recommend a conservative approach, and if you choose to go that route, to try to modify at least the procedure so that it doesn't come to you for consideration.
Madam Mayor.
Wait a minute, Mr. Thomas, we're, Ms. Minas isn't done.
That is my concern, that council could be wiped out, if you will, where we all could be removed.
It's only for that decision, not wiped out altogether.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. For, yeah, for making that decision. That, and to, with your recommendation as the attorney, where I'm not an attorney, I'm not a lawyer, I have a Law 101, you know, which is not good, but I, that's my concern. I wouldn't want to challenge, if that is your recommendation, that to renew the instructions or the information, then that is, that's what I would go with.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am. The attorney can throw hypotheticals out there all day long, but right now, this is the document that we have that talks about appeals, and it says the city manager can do it. So the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded, and we need to vote on it.
Wait a minute, we have further discussion.
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Elfry.
And one thing makes me a little different than every other council member is my children aren't grown yet, and my youngest is eight years old. And I would tell you, so it, something being, something being visual and large, you know, I don't wanna drive by there with my children and they look over and me say, "Hey, look forward, don't look left." I mean, it's gotta, we gotta look at it. Our city represents a lot of people, young people and old people. Again, this is our home, and let's remember that. That's just what I wanted to say.
Okay, Ms. Thomas.
I would like to add, I think we're being put in a very odd position here, and I don't like this position. I don't know enough facts about each one of the sides to be able to say, you know, nor am I going to say which side at this point, cause I think the attorney has stated that that would probably not be the right thing to do right now. However, I would state that, I mean, if this is gonna go back to the P and Z Board, I would like to highly recommend that the P and Z Board really listen to the people that, you know, are really having a problem with this and maybe some kind of a compromise before it could ever happen to come to City Council. And maybe some kind of compromise could be made to make this issue better or more payable to both sides, both parties, so that there could be a good resolution without putting the council in such an odd position. I don't know for this case or not whether this is something, you know, I think these rules do need to be changed, and I would like to see the attorney change it, not so much for this situation, which I'm not even so sure, even if we did change it now, it would change this situation. But I would like to see for the future that those do change, and it goes to the way all the, our other boards pretty much go. So, you know, that's sort of where I sit on all this right now.
I'd like to weigh in because the fact that to allow the city manager, I can't support this, to allow the city manager to do this, I think is exactly what our city attorney is saying. We'll lose this case. If we, if we, we need to do it the right way. And Lisa Elaine, I know you've been through heck with all these businesses, you know, all these artists, but you must file the appeal. I mean, cause that is, that would be sufficient evidence to the court system, so that by the time it gets here to us, we can make... You're out of order, sir. You're out of order. So I can't support this. I think that the applicant needs to go to the appeals process. So, all right, so we have a motion?
Wait.
And a second?
City Manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McNeese.
Just wanna say a couple things. There are a lot of issues that have all been thrown in one basket here, and I wanna give you a sense how I see this from my point of view, and make one thing upfront perfectly clear. If you vote for me to file this appeal, it will happen. There's no debate, there's no other conversation about that. What happens if you don't direct me to do that, I don't know yet. And let me explain that to you, because let me explain what my thought process would be. First of all, this process where the city manager is given the authority to appeal the decision of one of your appointed citizens advisory boards to another one of your appointed citizens advisory board is so unusual, I've never seen it before. It is really strange, and I don't know how it ended up being written that way, but I don't really like it. I would, if I were you, I wouldn't like it either, because these are your appointed advisory boards, these are people you select to speak on behalf of your residents on these decisions. But if we're in that position where nobody will file an appeal and it comes down to either I do or there's no appeal, here's my thought process. Here's what I have to go through. There are a lot of issues that have been raised here that really don't have anything to do with that question, in my mind. And I'm, I no doubt I'll make some of you mad, and I may make some of you happy, and some of you won't care, but let me explain that to you. The social media environment is completely outside of my control, and in my most genius, millennial abilities, could not influence the social media environment in any way, least of all through an appeal or not an appeal, or that is something that is really not germane to this particular decision. The previous or other artwork of this artist really doesn't have anything to do with this conversation, in my mind. Because what the question would be for me, if I asked myself, why does it seem... Because what the question would be for me, if I asked myself, why is this city manager given this authority? Why is he able to ask for an appeal? I would say it's because the test would be, did the historical and architectural review board follow its own rules? Are there procedural flaws? Do I have some sense that there was bias or there's been a suggestion that they were intimidated and they acted in a way that they wouldn't have had they not been intimidated? Is that really true? Did that happen? Those are the kind of questions I would ask. And what I would focus most specifically on, there's two types of rules for a process like this. There's objective rules and there are subjective rules. And if there's evidence that there have been violations of these procedures that are objectives, that are clear, then I would certainly rush to file an appeal. Or if there had been some sort of intimidation or harassment or something that, that drove it to not really be a legitimate process, I would rush to file an appeal. If it's a case where there are qual, there are guidelines in the architectural review board standards that are subjective, this is what I would be very slow to do. I would be very slow to, to substitute my judgment for their judgment. Because you appointed them to make these judgment calls on your behalf. And that's where we get into some really tricky ground. And, and you ask the question, okay, if, and here's the question, here's the question I would ask. For example, in this process of, is it, is it a problem with their rules that these murals were not painted precisely as they were proposed? The question I would ask, and I haven't asked it yet, but I, I will ask if I need to, is, is that common? Is that typically the way this process works? Or is it more typical that, um, art is proposed exactly what it's going to look like? It ends up on the wall exactly how it was proposed? I can tell you in my experience, and I've worked in a city that had a very robust public art program, it is probably more common than not that things don't end up on the wall exactly as they're proposed by the artist initially. Uh, light is different, the wall's different, the sculpture is different than it was originally proposed. I know it changed, but, but I, that's knowable. Is that common practice or is, I mean, I know, even in hard construction, I appreciate what Councilman Alfred said, but I've been in an awful lot of these meetings and I've never seen a city council tell the builder, oh, you're a foot too close to the setback, tear that wall down. I've seen a lot of compromises reached and a lot of horse trading over that. But it's actually a little unusual to say, you, you know, you messed up, you're going to have to tear that, although it does happen, I'll, I'll give you that. Um, and I'm not telling you what comes out the other end. I'm telling you, those are the kind of questions that I'm going to want, because I want to be comfortable that if I'm going to make that decision, that I should make an effort to have that, that decision of the architecture review board overturned, that there's a very solid reason in their process to do that. And I haven't conducted that analysis, I haven't looked at that. I just want you to understand what my thought process would be in doing that. And I appreciate there are some very strong feelings about it. And, and that's why I wanted to make it clear, that's how I would see it. And again, if you direct me to do that, it'll happen and it'll happen tomorrow.
Madam Mayor.
So, Mr. Thomas.
Well, based on what I'm hearing the city manager say, then then it becomes a free for all. Because if we're not going to have them go to the Harb and get approval first, then they just go to the Harb and say, hey, this is what we're going to paint, like or not. This is, this is what it's going to be. So, again, there's got to be a pre-approval process where they come, they show what they're going to do, they approve it, they go do it, they come back, they show the final product and it matches up. And if it doesn't, you take it down. There's got to be some guidelines that they follow. If not, what's use of even having this Harb?
Well, Councilman, the point I'm making is, there are guidelines. And the question is, are they subjective? And if they're subjective, who is supposed to make the judgment call? And the way the rules are written, that judgment call is made by historical and architectural review board. And that's where we are. Okay, they've made that decision. Now the question is, is that going to be appealed? In my, if I had my perfect world, one of the affected parties who has a, a stake in this, rather than just a professional stake, which is mine as the manager, we're trying to help run the city, would file that appeal and they would make their case. Um, if they choose not to do that, then I guess it falls to me to decide whether to do it or not do it. Or if you direct me to do it, then it happens. That's, that's just where we are.
Yes, sir. And, and, ma'am, can I follow up with the city manager? Can I have a follow up real, real fast?
Sure.
And also, Mike, and I showed you, or city manager, I showed you the photograph, you've seen the photograph of what was shown to the Harb, the first photograph of this mural, okay?
Yes.
And then you saw the final product, not even close. It's not even close. So how could they turn around and then approve that based on what was presented first? It doesn't make any sense.
Well, here's the answer to your question. This is the process I'd go through. One, is that typical? Is it, as you point out, nine out of 10? Is that the way this always goes? Do these artists, because I know what happens sometimes is, what you see is, here's artwork this person's done somewhere else. They'll do something here that's like this. This is their style, this is the, the type of art they do. Do you want this artist to do this? And then you bring it back afterwards, because, you know, the artist may not even know yet exactly what they're going to do. Now, I don't know if that's this situation. I know I've seen that before. So I don't know yet, because I haven't gotten into this. Because I'm trying to keep myself out of it until I have to make a decision. What I don't know is, were these things proposed as, this is exactly what you're going to get if you allow this to happen? And I haven't been into that yet to know. But I do know it's not unusual for an artist to put out a typical piece of his work or for, and in this case, I, I, what I know from what I've seen so far in the minutes, it wasn't actually the artist, it was someone holding pieces of his work saying, this is, you know, this is the guy's work, this is what he does. And I don't know yet whether that was represented as exactly what you're going to get. I'll have to listen to that tape myself to know. But that's, just trying to answer your question about that process.
Mayor.
All right, Ms. Lopez.
I see this as a second opinion. Uh, there's nothing wrong with us going and asking the planning and zoning for a second opinion. And most of the questions he has will probably be answered by them. So, and no one's saying that we're going to accept the mural or not. We want a second opinion. We want a process to continue, to face both of the problems. Because I don't know where this city is going if they lay out something like this. Who knows? So I am supporting the fact of the appeal.
Okay, through the city manager.
That's correct.
All right, so, all right, are we, uh, ready to vote?
And one last thing, I will say, I will have to support it as well. Because we have a business owner that's come up here and asked for our help. And that's what we're here for. So, yeah, she's, I'm sure she's, she's set up here that she feels she's been threatened and et cetera. It's our job to protect our citizens. So I'm going to have to support that as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. McNeese.
Let me throw something out here, because the, there's a, a paradox at play that is, is really making this difficult. In trying to be Solomon and say, what's, what's the wisest course here? What's the option? You put yourself in a position, and what the city attorney is telling you is, you put yourself in a position, if you direct me by majority of vote to appeal this, of declaring that you're not impartial, that you have a, a preferred outcome, which is that this decision be overturned. And you, to some degree, take yourself out of the game then, to hear it in a position where you can actually act to make that happen. I'm, I'm just thinking about problem solving here. You have an option, I think, maybe, you know, and Allison and I have been talking here very briefly, to say, we as a body recognize that a majority of us have very strong opinions on this issue. That we doubt that the test of impartiality that would be required for us to sit in a quasi judicial manner to hear this decision ultimately, probably couldn't be met, because we feel too strongly about this already. So what we're going to do is we're going to direct the city manager to, to bring this appeal on our behalf to the planning and zoning board. And then we're going to say, if either party, or if the losing party at the planning and zoning board wants to pursue it further, we recuse ourselves. We clearly aren't impartial. You're going to have to take it to circuit court.
All right, so we can do that?
But you're taking, but then, you know, a minute ago, you were very concerned in not giving up your ability to make that decision. But what I, what Allison's not saying to you, I'm going to say a little more directly, you're kind of taking yourself out of that position already by, by showing so clearly what outcome you're, you desire. And so maybe that's a way to get the appeal filed, take these people out of that position.
Okay.
And get the appeal filed and say, and, and if that's not, if that outcome isn't what one party either wants, don't, don't come to you, go to circuit court.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, great idea. Great idea.
All right, so, I like that idea.
Where are we on this motion?
All right, so, um, the maker of the motion was Ms. Lopez. Are you in agreement to revise that motion to what the city manager said?
But then, again, it's the same thing. It's ta, it's taking it out of city council.
Right.
And I, I, I want to make the decision for the city. Plain and simple. I don't want the courts to do it. You know, we got to stop being afraid of the courts all the time. Doesn't mean we're going to lose on the courts, you know? It's our job to make decisions and that's where I stand. So I want my motion the way I left it.
All right. And the maker of the second is agreeable to it? All right.
Can you talk to Ms. Thomas first? Let me think about that.
All right.
I want to think about that.
I would like the motion just be.
Hold on, I got Ms. Thomas.
Okay. I, I would just state, um, that I think the reason why that that needs to occur the way that, uh, the city manager just said is, I think the fact, the conversation that we've already had today, we've already pretty much stated opinions here. I think that's the whole point. We've already disqualified ourselves, so I don't think it's going to be able to come to us at this point and be a, and be a council decision. And, and that's why I think the, 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 what has been stated here actually is probably a very good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I, you persuaded me, but I don't, I, this is a one time thing. It's not going to be an all the time decision. It comes, we, we'll vote on it today, goes to planning and zoning after he files an appeal. Then hopefully, whatever they decide, if it goes to court, then fine. Then we're, we're out of it only because of that situation.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ms. Dolly.
So are we going to withdraw that original motion in favor of a new motion?
We're going to update.
Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So we're going to, um, yeah, let her withdraw it and, um, and make her of the second agreeable to the withdrawal and then, all right, so restate your motion.
Okay, my motion is for the city manager to follow the, uh, the appeal with the planning and zoning, uh, board.
Okay.
And then if, depending on their response, if it goes, depending on their response, then a decision is made whether or not.
Okay.
They, put it this way, just leave it like that and let whoever is against it do whatever they have to do.
Then it'll go to court. That's right.
If that's what they decide.
Ms. Dolly.
Okay, so.
Wait a minute.
That was seconded?
Uh, Mr. Thomas, you want to second that?
I'll second that, yes.
All right, so we got a second.
I, I just want, as you're making this decision on whether to pursue the appeal, I was hoping to avoid this, but because you're not going to be considering it as a quasi judicial board, I think I need to go into it. So on appeal, the decision is not actually a second bite at the apple. What the appeal is, is they look at the record that was made at the Harb board. You can't introduce new evidence. So they're going to look at the evidence that was presented to the Harb board and they're going to look for competent substantial evidence. The courts are going to look at, the, the P and Z board and the courts are going to want to be sure that due process is followed. So the recusal of this board would be a good way to remedy that issue. And they're going to look at, to make sure the proper law was applied. And I realize that our code talks about appropriateness. But the, but the piece that is missing, that the courts will insist on, is that a mural is a sign. And as you guys know from the sign code, uh, content based regulations of signs triggers First Amendment concerns. So the city, as the state actor, cannot regulate the content based, uh, contents based perspective of the sign, except in certain situations. But those situations are incredibly limited. There are things like pornography, fighting words, and inciting illegal behavior, imminent illegal behavior. Now, it does not include disrespect. It does not include rudeness. It does not include, um, there's some very interesting case law with foul language that the court said, nope, that's not enough to trigger it. Simply being offended or not liking it or thinking that it's disrespectful or, um, uh, it, it is not going to trigger, uh, the avoidance of the First Amendment. So the instruction that has to be given to the P and Z board and that the court will file on appeal is to honor the First Amendment, because we have to. We have to do that.
Excuse me, does that include portraying violence?
Actually, it would, to the extent that it doesn't trigger this idea of imminent illegal behavior, yes.
Well, uh, Ms. Dolly, what if the response to that is, uh, violence to, uh, to the business owner?
To my knowledge, that's not what we have dealt with here.
But she has already complained about it.
I, I don't think that there's any police report that indicates there has been violence. There have been, again, um, as your advocate, uh, we will certainly provide representation to find the case laws that would support the position that the city manager or through this council would be taking. But I want you to recognize that it's a difficult battle.
Right. And I, and I'm, that's why I'm trying to get your attorney opinion.
And my attorney opinion is that, that is going to be very difficult.
All right, uh, Ms. Moore and Mr. Thomas.
Sitting here and listening to our city attorney, um, are we just spinning our wheels on this? I, I'm feeling like I'm sort of lost here, uh, when we bring the First Amendment into it. And, and the reasons that you gave us that, um, this mural may not offend anything on that first, First Amendment, um, they may go that it's just subjective. It's however you look at it. It's making me just feel like I'm not going to be able to give any relief to anyone, either the naysayers or the people who like it. I just feel like I'm caught here, caught here in the, in the middle, when the more we talk about it, the more we bring in the, the First Amendment. As I say, I'm, I'm, I'm not confused, I'm frustrated. Let me just put it that way. Because I would like to be able to, to give both sides some relief on this. And at this point, I feel like I can't.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Thomas.
We, we can't look into a crystal ball and see what the P and Z board is going to do or the court. We have a process that's established by Article five and we follow that process and let it play itself out. That's all we can do as a city council. And so, again, we got it, we got a motion, we got a second.
Yes.
Let's do it.
All right.
Okay?
All right, no more discussion? And then, all right, let's call for a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye and the motion passes. All right. All right, so I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council on item B for unfinished business. Uh, this is item eight, ordinance number 2018 dash zero two, A and V number three seven six. Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to vacation of a 50-foot unimproved right of way known as Mosley Road, 4150 West O'Gally Boulevard, as shown on the plat of Indian River Groves and Gardens. Recorded in Plat Book Six, page 87, Public Records of Brevard County, Florida, making findings, providing for a condition of approval, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is engineering, Ms. Jenny Lamb.
I have nothing further to add on second reading, but I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? This is second reading. So council, what is your, well, excuse me, uh, this is a quasi judicial item. Any disclosures? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Any sign up sheets? No, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore. I move for approval of ordinance number 2018 dash oh two.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2018 dash zero two by Ms. Moore, second by Mr. Alfred. Discussion, seeing none. This is second reading, is going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Alfred.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Minas.
Aye.
Mayor Meehan.
I vote aye and the motion pass.
I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number nine is ordinance number 2018-03, Administrative Zoning Code Amendment, Bat Houses. Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to bat-bird houses, amending the zoning code of the City of Melbourne, Florida, making findings, amending Appendix B of the city code entitled zoning, amending Article 2 definitions, amending Article 7 accessory and temporary uses and structures, providing for severability and interpretation, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Decker.
Yes, I did not have anything further to add on second reading.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Decker? All right, disclosures are not required. This is a public hearing, I do have a sign-up sheet. Ms. Purdy. Good to see you. We saw you at the Florida Power and Light, I guess it was...
Workshop.
Workshop, thank you. All right.
Thank you, I'm Leslie Purdy, Melbourne resident for 38 years.
Okay, very good.
We have bats in my bat house.
How many?
I'm not sure, I don't, I haven't quite worked that out. I just found out last night.
All right, without a sensor or something.
So I'm here to speak to you about amending the amendment. I spoke with Sherry, the bat lady, whose brochure...
It doesn't sound right. Okay, sorry.
The bat lady.
The bat lady, okay.
Her brochure is what you used as a guideline for the amendment.
Okay.
And I spoke with her last night, and she would like to see the maximum be 20 feet high instead of the 15 feet that is written in the amendment. And then also, she has recommended that the pole be put on the fence line, much like a fence post, that you can attach the bat pole to a fence pole, and that would make lawn maintenance easier. I guess in her experience, it has been difficult to maintain. So if the, you know, like at my house, I've got a .17 acres, which leaves about seven and a half feet between my fence line and my house. So if I have to bring the bat pole in five feet for the setback, that would leave it two and a half feet off of my house. My roof is 14 feet, so that doesn't give the bat enough clearance to find the bat house. So this is why she has, she has said, you know, 20 feet and no setback for the pole that the bat house sits on top of.
Okay.
Also, there's mention of the sidewalk, and how close the bat house is to the sidewalk. My bat house, that has bats and can't be moved now because they're endangered species, I just was out there last night and noticed that the, since it's right up against the sidewalk, but the house is facing away from the sidewalk, the guano does not land on the sidewalk, it lands directly under the bat house. So it depends on what direction the house is aiming.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Purdy. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Elfry.
A lot of times, I got to rely on the experts to give us information, and as five feet doesn't sound like a lot, looking at the bat houses, and kind of looking at the idea, I think it would be wise to make it, to make the change to a maximum of 20 feet in height. If you're going to do it, let's do it right, just my opinion.
All right. Ms. Decker, 20 feet, is that going to interfere with anything? I mean, would 20 feet be appropriate?
Well, we've written the ordinance so that the height allowed for the bat house would be consistent with other accessory structures at 15 feet. So if council desires to change that, it's a fairly substantial rewrite of the ordinance.
Okay.
As well as the setbacks that were mentioned by Ms. Purdy.
At this point, we would have to, would we have to re-advertise?
I would probably ask Ms. Dolly if that's the direction you...
I assume because it was advertised to reflect a change to definitions, and that's not what you're going to be doing anymore, right?
Right, there's additional things that'll need to be changed. The proposed setbacks would be different if councils agreeing with the speaker, and we would have to set a separate height for bat houses.
Okay, so Ms. Lopez?
Yes, she mentioned she wanted to put the pole on to the fence, attach it on top of the fence. I mean, she has neighbors, how do they feel about having that so close to their property?
Yes.
That's why staff didn't recommend that in the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, that would be my concern. Okay, so if we want to change it to 20 feet, then we're going to have to re-advertise it. So the question's going to be...
Well, Mayor, could we table this and look into this a little more? Because I mean, it kind of does need to be 20 feet, in my opinion, a maximum of 20 feet, but I do see that we don't want to put it somewhere where it would offend the neighbor, where they wouldn't want it. Maybe it gives us a little more time to have kind of the bat expert to come in and kind of give us a better idea, because I want to do it right. Want to do it once and want to do it right.
Right, okay.
That's just a thought.
So can we table it, Ms. Dolly, on the second reading?
You want to just postpone it or deny it?
No, we want to postpone it.
Postpone it. Postpone to the next meeting, but I think that staff probably needs direction as to what you would like. If, is someone going to be appearing? Is this bat expert going to be appearing? Batman, Batwoman?
Bat person?
Get the bat phone out.
Okay, yeah, I would think that's what we want to do, is bring the expert in, and let's discuss it, and then make a final decision.
Yes.
All right. Is that okay? Yeah, Ms. Moore.
I'll make a motion that we postpone this action until our next council meeting, which would be...
Okay, the 27th.
To the February 27th?
All right, so would that give us enough time? Two weeks.
I'm not sure what I'm being directed to have enough time to do.
No, February 27th.
27th.
Yeah, I was looking at March.
What did you say?
I just say I'm not sure what you're asking staff to do in that timeframe.
We need to bring the expert in, and let's discuss about this 20-foot pole and...
Location.
Location.
Okay, so you'd like for us to invite her to the next council meeting?
Okay.
For discussion.
Which would be February 27th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And I'll second that motion for Ms. Moore.
So we have a motion by Ms. Moore, second by Mr. Elfry, to postpone this...
Action.
Action item till the next council meeting, and bring the expert, the bat expert in, and we'll discuss it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 10 is ordinance number 2018-04, Zoning Code Text Amendment and Land Development Regulations Sidewalk Waiver Process. Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to sidewalks, amending the zoning code of the City of Melbourne, Florida, making findings, amending Appendix B of the city code entitled zoning, amending Article 9, zoning applications and procedures, amending Appendix D of the city code entitled Land Development Code, amending Section 8.6 Required Improvements, amending Section 9.105, General Intent and Applicability, amending Section 9.106 definitions, amending Section 9.107, Design Standards, amending Section 9.109, Establishment of Sidewalks Trust Fund, amending Section 9.110, Administration of Sidewalks Trust Fund, amending Section 9.112, Sidewalk Required in accordance with Plan, amending Section 9.113, Allocation of Sidewalks Trust Fund Payments, Providing for Severability and Interpretation, Providing an Effective Date, and Providing an Adoption Schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Decker.
Yes, staff didn't have anything further to add on second reading.
All right, thank you, Ms. Decker. Any questions for Ms. Decker? All right, seeing none, this is quasi-judicial, no disclosures are required. Public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? No, I don't. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Thomas.
Approve ordinance number 2018-04 based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Memorandum.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2018-04 from Mr. Thomas, second by Ms. Thomas. Discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez.
I brought this issue up, city council, because I felt it was dealing with sidewalks going nowhere, so I wanted the ordinance to be revised. And I voted against it once we had an ordinance, because I felt at the time it didn't go far enough. I was looking for a waiver for some of our residents, but then I decided that the city does need a fund to continue more sidewalks. And I think it's a minor cost, and everyone should pay something to be able to walk all over the city on all the sidewalks that everyone else has paid for, so I'm going to now support this.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion for, and a second, and any further discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading, it's going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elfry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Minas.
Aye.
Mayor Meehan.
And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 11 is ordinance number 2018-05, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to apportionment of city council districts, making findings, amending Chapter 22 of the city code entitled Elections, amending Section 22-34 by altering the description of Council District 3, adopting a map, amending the boundary of City Council District 3 in accordance with Section 22-40, providing for interpretation, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under the City Clerk's Office, Ms. Weiser.
Their recommendation is for approval, and we don't have any additional information to provide.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? No, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Minas.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2018-05.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2018-05 by Vice Mayor Minas, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, this is a second reading, it's going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elfry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Minas.
Aye.
Mayor Meehan.
I vote aye, and the motion passes. We are in item C, New Business, item 12. All right, let me get to that. It's about City Hall 4th floor improvements, project number 9011, no, 112, sorry, too many ones. And it's under Engineering, Ms. Jenny Lamb.
This is a construction contract for the City Hall 4th floor improvements. It is for the build-out of approximately 5,200 square feet of the 4th floor, but included in this is also to get the mechanical and electrical systems all the way to, for the entire floor. So we couldn't just do a partial build-out on those, and so that's getting the air conditioning and heating and all of the electrical up to that floor. The build-out includes occupied office space along with a staff training facility, and the training facility can be separated into having actually two training facilities at one time, or one larger training facility and a conference room, along with building out the leased area that is currently with Senator Mayfield. We had, let me see here, let me make sure I get this right, five bids for this, and this was the second time we bid this project. We, I do want to note that when we rebid the project, we made some minor changes, some of which are when the contractor could be in the building and doing the work, and how they got in and out of the building, and those changes resulted in almost $100,000 reduction to the bid. So we did, you know, the first bids came in, and we saw what we could do, and we made some minor changes and got the bids down almost $100,000. So I recommend approval of the construction contract to Reynolds General Contractors of Melbourne, Florida, in the amount of $646,456 for project number 90112. And also, in conjunction with this, we need a budget resolution or to transfer public facility impact fees in the amount of $692,000 to appropriate funds for this project.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? All right, seeing none. This is a public, no, it doesn't have to be a public hearing, okay? Well, it could be if somebody signed up, but we don't have any. So council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Minas.
I move for the award of construction contract to Reynolds General Contractors Incorporated of Melbourne, Florida, in the amount of $646,456 for the City Hall 4th floor improvements, project number 90112.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item 12A, as stated in council's package, by Vice Mayor Minas, second by Ms. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 12B.
Mayor.
Ms. Thomas.
Move for approval of Resolution Number 3715.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for to support Resolution Number 3715 by Ms. Thomas, second by Vice Mayor Minas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item C13. Let me see here. Okay. Let me get to it. 13, Engineering, this is Jenny Lamb.
This is for the contract award, the construction contract award for Hibiscus Boulevard and Dairy Road Mast Arm Signal Project. And the low bidder was Florida Safety Contractors Incorporated of the Nona Sasa, Florida. And when we brought this forward for the design of the project, I know that council asked that we communicate and that we work with West Melbourne for any future plans that they had for Dairy Road, and we have worked with them. They've reviewed the plans, they say that the plans work in conjunction with any widening projects they have, so I did want to point that out at this time. And this project is funded with local option gas taxes, and there is adequate funding in that project budget, so staff recommends award of the construction contract to Florida Safety Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $321,617 for the Hibiscus and Dairy Mast Arm Signal Project.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? All right, so Ms. Lamb, so West Melbourne, are they going to widen a four-lane highway?
Not that, it's in future plans for them to do so, and they had just expressed concerns that whatever we put, they put in, they didn't want our mast arm, the signal project, to impact what they could do in the future. And the way we've configured it, it does not conflict with anything they want to do in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you. So council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Thomas.
Move to award construction contract to Florida Safety Contractors, Inc. of Nona Sasa, Florida, in the amount of $321,617 for the Hibiscus and Dairy Mast Arm Signal Project.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item number 13, as stated in council's package, by Ms. Thomas, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 14 is contract award for the lift station number 40 at Crown Boulevard, Force Main relocation, project number 32113, Young's Communications, Inc., Melbourne, Florida, $324,465. Ms. Jenny Lamb.
Lift station forty is located on Crown Boulevard, and the force main from that lift station runs up parallel to Babcock Street and into the Pirate Lane right-of-way. We have, um, we designed this project in-house and, with an engineering. And we also made sure that what we were doing as part of this project, it did not conflict with the design or with the future construction of Pirate Lane.
Okay.
And, um, so staff recommends, oh, I do need to point out before I get that far along. We haven't done this in a while, but the low bidder, um, the second low bidder was within five percent of the low bid amount. And so, our local vendor preference policy kicked in. And the, and so, Youngs Communication Company, which is a local Melbourne company, they, um, they agreed to match the low bid amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars. And per our policy, our procurement policy, um, the, the, they will be recognized as the low bidder at this time. So, um, recommend award of construction contract to Youngs Communication Company of Melbourne, Florida in the amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars.
I'm glad to see we're using local contractors.
You too.
Alright, so, good policy. Alright, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Uh, Vice Mayor Minus.
I move for the award of construction contract to Youngs Communications Company Incorporated of Melbourne, Florida in the amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars for the lift station number forty, Force Main Relocation, project number three two one one three.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion for approval, as stated in council's package, on item number fourteen. Approved by Vice Mayor Minus, second by Ms. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item number fifteen is, uh, approval of land conveyances from the City of Melbourne to the Florida Department of Transportation to the Saint John Heritage Parkway Ellis Interchange Project. And it's, uh, the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, I'm Adam Conley, Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office. Uh, as the mayor, uh, stated, this, uh, item relates to a proposed land conveyance from, uh, the City of Melbourne to the Florida Department of Transportation related to the Saint John's Heritage Parkway and Ellis Interchange Project. I have a few visual aids, uh, for council. This first slide shows the project summary for the Ellis Interchange Project. Uh, for a point of reference, you can see, uh, Interstate ninety-five in the middle. And towards the right side of the image is the intersection of John Rhodes Boulevard and Ellis Road. And as you can see, as FDOT is proposing an extension of Ellis Road and a flyover to connect with Saint John's Heritage Parkway as well as an interchange for both, uh, northbound and southbound, uh, Interstate ninety-five. In conjunction with this project, uh, the Florida Department of Transportation has requested that the city donate certain property that the city owns within this area. And see if you'll go to the second slide. Um, the two areas outlined in red are city-owned property. Uh, the one to the left, uh, closer to Interstate ninety-five, we're identifying as the Interchange, uh, South Site. It was purchased, uh, in conjunction with, uh, the Airport Authority in two thousand and six. And, uh, the city and Airport Authority actually entered into a land trust agreement related to the purchase of that property, which expressly anticipated that the property would be used for this Ellis Interchange Project. Uh, the other property, uh, is being identified as the Interchange North Site. Uh, it's been owned by the city, uh, since nineteen sixty-three and utilized for airport operations. There's a radio communications tower on that site. Um, it's, it's a little small, I apologize for that, but the, uh, small yellow, uh, area indicated on that site is actually the area that's, um, that FDOT has requested be conveyed. It's an expansion of existing right-of-way for, uh, Ellis Road and, uh, uh, Saint John, or, I'm sorry, John Rhodes Boulevard. Um, and, uh, with that, uh, again, um, the resolutions that are proposed have two conditions for approval. The first is, uh, the approval of the Airport Authority Board. Um, as you know, as you may know, uh, the Airport Authority Board did provide similar conditional approval on January twenty-fourth. Uh, the other, uh, condition that's stated is for, uh, the, um, Federal Aviation Authority to provide releases of certain airport-related restrictions. Because airport funds were used in the acquisition of these properties, uh, the FAA needs to, uh, release those properties from, uh, those airport-related, uh, restrictions. So, with, um, with the, uh, resolutions this evening, the Airport Authority's approval has already been given. And then, the city manager will be authorized to execute those deeds and, and complete those conveyances uh, once the FAA has provided those deeds of releases. It's, uh, our understanding that, uh, the Airport Authority's counsel is actively working with the FAA to, uh, secure those, uh, releases.
Alright.
Uh, and with that, uh, City Attorney's Office recommends approval of resolutions thirty-seven thirteen and thirty-seven fourteen. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. If you have technical questions about the project, I may refer to City Engineer Jenny Lamb for those.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Conley.
Thank you very much.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Conley?
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez.
Uh, it mentions here that there's a radio tower i- in, in that area.
Yes, councilwoman, the, uh, the Interchange North Site, as, uh, the cursor is next to, it's the, uh, smaller property at the intersection of John Rhodes and, uh, Ellis Road. Um, that, the, the radio tower itself will not be affected by, uh, this conveyance. Um, and we have assurances from FDOT that our access to that site won't be affected by this conveyance.
So, it is an active radio, uh, tower?
You know, that, um, my understanding is that, uh, the airport has requested the FAA to decommission it. So, I, I don't know the active status, but I, I think that's somewhat in flux for the future there. It may or may not be necessary in the future. I, I'm not sure as to its current state of, of operation.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, seeing none. This is a public hearing. Do I have any sign-up sheets? I don't, so I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council, and we'll vote separately. Item, uh, sixteen, excuse me, fifteen A. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Lopez.
Approval of resolution number thirty-seven thirteen.
Second.
Alright, I have a, uh, a motion for approval of resolution number thirty-seven thirteen by Ms. Lopez, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item fifteen B. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Thomas.
Move for approver, approval of resolution number thirty-seven fourteen.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion for approval of resolution number thirty-seven fourteen by Ms. Thomas, second by Vice Mayor Minus. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item number sixteen is the consent agenda. I had nobody, uh, removing that. So, council, what is your pleasure for sixteen A and B?
Mayor.
Uh, Vice Mayor Minus.
I move for approval of consent agenda, items A and B.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion for approval of consent agenda sixteen A through B by Vice Mayor Minus, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item seventeen, I had nothing removed from consent agenda. Back to eighteen, approval of the renewal of the employee insurance and other benefits. And let me get to item eighteen. This will be under human resources, and this is Ms...
Foxworth.
Foxworth, yes. Alright, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I provided, uh, some documents in your package, and hopefully that information was sufficient for your review. Um, the city provides various insurance programs as benefits for employees. The anniversary date for the renewal of the city's employee, uh, medical, group medical prescription drug plan, short-term disability, dental insurance, and basic life insurance is April first, two thousand and eighteen. The city's Employee Benefits Advisory Committee, consisting of ten employee representatives from different departments, four support staff, and the chairperson, met twice to review and discuss renewal options. Following discussion of options with representatives from Health First, uh, and we do have a representative here from Health First, uh, Ms. Stephanie Kelly, she is our account executive. Um, and fellow employees, recommendations for renewal were submitted to the city manager. After careful review of the options for renewal, the recommendations are to approve the renewal of the group medical and prescription drug plan with Health First Health Plans for the two thousand and eighteen plan year with no premium increases or design changes. To renew the short-term disability for one year with no increase in cost and no plan design changes. To renew the dental insurance for one year with no increase in cost or plan design changes. And to approve the renewal of basic life insurance with no increase and no plan design changes. Uh, there is an increase, uh, to our retirees that I noted in the document. Um, that is the information I have unless you need further information. But I also have financial information if you, uh, would like to discuss, that I was helped by my colleague, the Director of Finance.
Alright, so, thank you, Ms. Foxworth. Any questions for Ms. Foxworth on this item?
Mayor.
Ms. Lopez?
I'm glad there was no increase, but is the co-payments the same, though?
Yes, there is no plan design change in any of them.
Alright, any other questions? I'm glad to see there was no increase. Alright, so, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Thomas.
Uh, move for approval of the renewal of group medical and prescription drug insurance with Health First Health Plans, short-term disability, basic life, and dental insurance for the two thousand and eighteen plan year.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion for approval, as stated in council's package, on item eighteen by Ms. Thomas, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Foxworth.
Thank you.
Now, without objection, council will convene as the Melbourne Downtown Community Redevel, Development Agency for the following item. Item number nineteen is approval of the First Amendment to the Master Redevelopment Agreement of the Highline Redevelopment Project. And this will be under community development. Ms. Cindy Demmer.
Yes, this is a request for approval of an amendment to the Master Redevelopment Agreement for the Highline Redevelopment Project. The, um, Master Redevelopment Agreement was, um, between the City of Melbourne, the Downtown Melbourne CRA, and Highline Apartments. And it was approved in February of last year of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, since that time, the developer began hi, the process of obtaining his financing shortly after that, in March of two thousand and seventeen. And he definitely anticipated that he would be underway, um, within that one-year timeframe. However, there have been some delays related to, um, his underwriting of his financing, which have held up the project, which is, um, causing the request for the one-year extension that is before council this evening. Uh, the proposed amendment to the agreement does modify three definitions that are related to timeframes within the agreement. The pre-construction period, the construction period, and the completion period will all be extended by one year. That is the only thing changing in the agreements, is that timeframe. Uh, so, um, in, in otherwise, um, all commitments the developer's made within the developer's agreement, the progress on his, um, development plans, those are proceeding through and are very close to being finalized. So, everything else, um, within the agreement has been followed through, um, during this past year. So, um, with that, staff would recommend approval of resolution number thirty-seven sixteen.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Demmer. Any questions for Ms. Demmer? Alright, I do have two sign-in sheets to speak. Laura Young. And I just need, uh, I know you, the name and city.
My name is Laura Young. Um, uh, my office is located at seventy-three eighty Morel Road, Suite two hundred, Vieira, Florida.
Okay.
Three two nine four zero. I'm here on behalf of, um, the Zimmerman Development, which is the developer for the project. Um, it's hard to imagine that it was just, um, a year ago that we were here coming to you with our project. And that day was a very, very special, um, special, important day in the life of this project. It was an accumulation of three years of really, really hard work, both on Zimmerman Development's side, our side, city staff's side, to come up with a project that was viable, that was worth doing, that would be an improvement to the, uh, downtown area, and that could really work. It really took that long for all of the pieces and parts to come together. For us to even be able to come to you with a project that we thought was doable and is doable. Um, the second most important milestone in the life of this project was the day we got the invitation letter from, uh, the Zimmerman, uh, HUD lender. Um, it, we had planned on getting it and had worked very hard with, uh, Walker Dunlap, which is the lender backed by the HUD program, um, for many, many months beforehand, because HUD requires a lot of things to be done upfront before they will commit to a project, which is different than a lot of conventional lenders. And so, we had been working literally the very next week after you guys approved us going forward with the project, to get that financing in place. And it was on track, basically until Hurricane Irma hit, and some of the other hurricanes that hit in the other parts of the world that may not have impacted Brevard County directly, but did impact the HUD programs and the lender itself and, um, FPNL, and, and everything that goes into the progress of this project pretty much came to a halt September eleventh, or September tenth. Tried to block it out of my mind. Um, and we actually were slated to get that invitation letter that create that. So, much work went into getting that very week. And so, we were in constant contact, Sam was, um, with Walker Dunlap, the lenders, to make sure everything was still staying on track and to keep them focused on our project. And they, they were. They have been excellent to work with. Um, we did finally get that invitation letter in mid-December, and we did not wanna come to city staff until we had that, what they call the golden ticket and waste their time in asking for any extension until we knew for sure we have another real timeline that can actually be met. Unless, of course, there's another hurricane. God willing, that will not happen.
We don't want that.
I think we're, we're due for a ten-year hiatus for a while. So, it really was, the, the threshold moment where we knew the timeframe wasn't gonna work was when Hurricane Irma hit. And we've been working really hard with the lender, with Sam, with FPNL, with others, to keep it on track with city staff, to come up with the next realistic timeframe. And, you know, I, I mentioned the, the first milestone was when we came to you with the, with the project, a real workable project. The second one was when we got the ticket saying the money's gonna come. It can actually be built, and we believe that. And we, we have a, a firm commitment from HUD. Everything is moving along the way it's supposed to, and I know, um, uh, Walker and Dunlap provided a letter in your packet that explains what the original timeframe was, and we were on track to close this February. And the things that were outside of Zimmerman's control and any of our control, that happened to push those timeframes back. And they are inundated with all sorts of things, projects and other things that they're trying to work with, all throughout the country. But they, they've given us the golden ticket. It's almost a for-sure thing. Of course, anything can happen. But it's, it's definitely, um, a realistic timeframe to push it back a year. The anticipation is that we would close on the loan in September, um, with a little bit of cushion in case something happens. Um, and then, everything, all the same obligations still have to be met. It gets on the tax roll. Everything is just one year later. So, there's no additional commitment on the city's part in terms of funding, the CRA funds that, um, were committed. Um, there's no, it's not like you're doing that early. You're still gonna get the substantial completion of the project and then go out and commit for the, um, CRA funds. So, it's just pushing everything back out a year. And we, we really appreciate your consideration in doing that because it, the project is really gonna happen.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Uh, next is Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you. It's, uh, Sam Zimmerman, um, Highline Apartments LLC Zimmerman Development, which is in Satellite Beach, Florida. It's nice to see you all again. Um, a couple of things that she didn't mention. We've been, the things I can control, I, we've been moving ahead on and with a lot of good progress. Um, one of the most important things I can say is our plans are completely draw, drawn, and they, where we've been through four rounds of comments with your staff here, and I, I think we can say we're within a week or two of being able to have a permit set, which is a pretty big deal for an eight-story building. That's not really an easy thing to get. So, despite the fact that, uh, HUD has taken longer, uh, much longer than even their own internal, uh, deadlines allow, um, we've been moving ahead with the things we can control. So, we really, if it weren't for HUD, we could break ground in, in two weeks. And this is really simple. Simply what happened was, we submitted to them for, uh, what they call the golden letter, which is the invitation letter. Uh, they had sixty-seven days to respond to us with that letter, and that would have been September eleventh. Ooh, that's a bad day to expect anything. Uh, September tenth, uh, the hurricane, um, occurred. And, and sort of my read on what happened, it's hard to get people to talk to you up at the HUD in Jacksonville. But I think with the flooding that happened in Houston and everything else, I mean, their primary mission is housing. And I think it's all hands on deck when something like that happens. And so, that, uh, sixty-seven-day deadline, which is their own internal deadline, um, actually turned into a hundred and fifty-one or a hundred and fifty-two days for us, and it didn't happen until mid-December. We were on track to meet our original deadline and, and, and close, uh, before March first, but that's just what happened. Um, a little disappointing for me. Uh, but, uh, you know, I try not to shorten my life worrying about things I can't control, so I'm just plowing forward. I appreciate, um, your, uh, consideration of this, uh, amendment. And I, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Any questions for Mr. Zimmerman?
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Thomas.
So, when are we realistically looking at a possible groundbreaking?
I think, I think that, I think that the, we asked the lender, who is the biggest HUD two twenty-one D four lender in the country, is the one we're working with, which is Walker and Dunlap is what she said, to write that letter. Um, and they're very conservative. So, I'd say that's a very conservative estimate. Uh, you know, it could be before then. It could be before then. I, I, when it comes to the federal government and, and their timelines, I'm a little, you know, my credibility with you is incredibly... a little, you know, my credibility with you is incredibly important to, to all of us. So, I'm a little, when you ask me to make predictions based on what a federal agency in Jacksonville, Florida, and what their timeline is, I just, I don't know. But the lender who has lots of experience has, has tried to put in a letter what they think very conservatively is the timeline. I can't wait to have a groundbreaking. Like I said, we, we have a permit set, literally within a week or two, ready to be picked up. And just to give you a sense of how long that process took, we started on that December of 2016. So, I mean, we've been working that whole time with our engineers and our architects and, and everything else, and we're just on the cusp of doing that. And that's a really, really big deal. So, we spent a lot of money. We spent a lot of time. We're really excited. Of course, we still completely believe in it, and now we're just waiting on this, this final piece to happen, which got delayed by an act of God, is really it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I move for approval of resolution number 3716.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for approval of resolution number 3716 by Ms. Moore, second by Ms. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Without objection, council will reconvene for the following item, resolution number 3716.
Mayor.
Under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Nothing. This is the same resolution.
Okay.
Just being acted on by city council.
All right. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor minus.
I move for approval of resolution number 3716.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for resolution number 3716 by Vice Mayor minus, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 20 is ordinance number 2018-06, and ordinance number 2018-07, the O'Gally Harbor Club condominiums, Ms. Allison Dolly.
Yes, ordinance number 2018-06, an ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to comprehensive planning, making findings, amending Appendix D, Chapter 4, Section 4.04 of the City Code, amending future land use map of the comprehensive plan by changing the future land use classification from mixed-use to high-density residential on 1.31 plus or minus acres of property located on the east side of Harbor City Boulevard, north of Sarno Road, and south of Spiller Street, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule. Ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning ordinance number 2005-120, by changing the zoning classification from CR317, multiple-family dwelling, high-density district with a cap of 17 units per acre, to CR320, multiple-family dwelling, high-density district with a cap of 20 units per acre, on 1.31 plus or minus acres of property located on the east side of Harbor City Boulevard, north of Sarno Road, and south of Spiller Street, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, this is the first reading ordinance is changing the existing future land use from the mixed-use to high-density residential, and changing the existing zoning from CR3 with a cap of 17 units per acre to CR3 with a cap of 20 units per acre on a 1.31-acre property. The property is located on the east side of US1 at the intersection of Sarno Road. So, this property was developed, developed back in 1983 with 26 condominium units. At that time, the property also included the Marina property and a parking lot that is located on the south side of the condominium. So, at that time, the density on this project was covered by the 17-unit-per-acre zoning that it was granted. Since that time, the Marina parcel and the southern parking lot parcel have been separated, lowering the acreage from the 2.41 acres it was originally to 1.31 acres. Additionally, the city granted the property a mixed-use future land use in 2010 that only allowed 15 units per acre. So, the reason for this request that's before council is to change the future land use and zoning so that the current development that is there today, the 26 condominium units, can continue and can be considered conforming. Currently, there have been some problems with condominium owners having problems refinancing because currently, as it is today, if it was destroyed by more than 50%, it couldn't be rebuilt at the density that it currently is. There is not any new proposed development on the property. There are no proposed changes on the property. The Planning and Zoning Board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the request, and staff would recommend approval of ordinance number 2018-06 and ordinance number 2018-07 based upon the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions from Ms. Dimmer? All right, seeing none. This is quasi-traditional. Any disclosures? No disclosures. This is a public hearing. Do I have any sign-up sheets? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Item 20A, Ms. Moore.
Well, I move for approval of ordinance number 2018-06 based upon the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item number, ordinance number 2018-06 by Ms. Moore, second by, I think it was Lopez?
Yes.
All right, second by Ms. Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 20B, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I again move for approval of ordinance number 2018-07 based upon the findings containing the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
A second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2018-07 by Ms. Moore, second by Vice Mayor minus. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 21, ordinance number 2018-08, Kenneth Muth Mini Storage, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the repeal of ordinance number 81-58, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning ordinance number 2005-120, by granting a conditional use to allow a mini-storage use on a 0.82 plus or minus acre partially-developed property, Zone C2, general commercial, located at the northeast corner of Babcock, Babcock Street and Lincoln Avenue, providing for site plan approval, providing for conditions of approval, providing that the conditional use granted herein may be revoked by the city council if the conditions of approval are not met, providing that the property shall be designated on the official zoning map by the symbol C, C2, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, this is the first reading and ordinance for conditional use approval to allow a mini-storage use in a C2 zoning district, also including site plan approval on a 0.82-acre parcel, parcel. The property is located at the northeast corner of Babcock Street and Lincoln Avenue. It's adjacent to a current office building, doctor's office building that's currently located there. The applicant is proposing to construct two new mini-storage buildings with a total of 20 mini-storage units within them, and additionally proposing, and the mini-storage is shown there in the red or the pink on your screen, and then Phase 2 of the proposal is a, an office addition that is shown in the beige on the screen that would be adjacent to the current office building, and that's proposed as Phase 2. The general area, there's commercial and non-residential properties pretty much to the north, south, and west of this property. There are residentially-zoned properties located to the east across Bryan Street. The Planning and Zoning Board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of these requests, and staff would recommend approval of ordinance number 2018-08, along with site plan approval for SP 2017-13 based upon the findings and conditions contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions for Ms. Dimmer? All right, seeing none. This is quasi-traditional. Any disclosures? No disclosures. This is a public hearing. Do I have any sign-up sheets? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor minus.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2018-08 with site plan approval, SP 2017-13, based upon the findings and conditions contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item number 21 as stated in council's package by Vice Mayor minus, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 22 is ordinance number 2018-09, capital improvements element, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to comprehensive planning, making findings, amending Appendix D, Chapter 4 of the City Code, amending Chapter 10 of the comprehensive plan entitled Capital Improvements Element, to reflect the annual update of the capital improvement schedule, providing for severability and interpretation, providing an effective date, and provide, providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under, let me get to it, Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan to allow the updating of the five-year schedule of capital improvements contained within the comprehensive plan. This is a requirement of Florida statute for the city to do annually. I know you guys are used to seeing us here every year doing this one. The CIE is a required component to our comprehensive plan, and it contains the capital improvement projects that we're required to show to maintain our adopted level of service requirements. The projects that are contained in, in this ordinance originate from our five-year capital improvement program within our 2017-2018 budget, as well as the city's mobility plan, and there are projects that we're required to include from the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization's Transportation Improvement Plan. So, all the projects in here already exist in another plan. It's just a culmination of putting in this, in the capital improvements element to send to the state. So, with that, staff would recommend approval of ordinance number 2018-09 based upon the findings contained in the staff memorandum.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions for Ms. Dimmer? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing. Do I have any sign-up sheets? All right, thank you. No sign-up sheets. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Thomas.
Approval of ordinance number 2018-9 based upon the findings contained in the staff memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2018-09 by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Elfree. Discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 23A, well, 23 is board appointments, letter A, appointment of five regular members and two alternates to the Beautification and Energy Efficiency Board. And let's get right to that because we had an assignment. And our mission
We did.
was to do voting on seven members of this board. So, we want to just go with, starting with number one as far as with their names that they want.
Exactly. Mayor, if you would just call on each council member to publicly read in alphabetical order their seven choices.
Okay. I'll go left to right. Ms. Lopez.
Conduct a tally.
Yeah.
Oh, it would be me with those last names.
Oh, okay.
First, Joy Morris, Randall Parkinson, Bo Platt, John Shepherd, Tommy Sokola, is it? John Windsor, Dan Woolen, Woolenwin, and Jacob, no, I'm sorry, hold on, not that Tommy. I was just going down the line.
Oh.
So, never mind Tommy. Okay, did I mention Tommy?
Oh, I see. Yeah, you did.
Okay.
So.
No.
All right.
Take him off. I'm sorry.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
John Windsor, Dan Woolen, Woolenwin.
Waltering.
And Jacob, the last one, Jacob, bear with me, Zehander.
That's eight. That's eight.
Yeah, that's too many.
No. Okay, that's Morris, Parkinson. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah. Joy, Mark, Parkinson, Platt, Shepherd, Windsor, Woolen, Woolenwin, whatever, and the last one, Jacob. That's seven.
That's seven?
Yeah.
All right. So, okay, Mr. Elfree.
All right. I wish we had a boating booth. We could just go. Probably malfunction. I know what it is. Anyway, Tom Davis, Don DeFrisco, Joy Morris, Randall Parkinson, Bo Platt, John Shepherd, and Dan Waltering.
Okay. Is that seven? Okay, I'm, all right. All right, Ms. Thomas.
Don DeFrisco, Joy Morris, Randall Parkinson, Bo Platt, John Shepherd, John Windsor, and Dan Waltering.
Okay. Vice Mayor minus.
Annette Anastasia, Joy Morris, Randall Parkinson, Bo Platt, John Shepherd, John Windsor, and Dan Waltering.
All right. Don DeFrisco, Joy Morris, Randall Parkinson, Bo Platt, John Shepherd, John Windsor, Dan Waltering. Okay, next. I'm sorry, Ms. Moore.
Annette Anastasia, Tom Davis, Joy Morris, Randall Parkinson, Tommy Sokola, John Windsor, and Jacob Zehander.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, Darcy Brown, Don DeFrisco, Joy Morris, Bo Platt, John Shepherd, Tommy Sokola, and Dan Waltering.
All right. So, now we will allow staff to do the few minutes. Should we just go ahead with the next item, or do we, is that gonna, we have another board appointment, item 23B.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Are we going to get the, are we going to get the results in a harmonically sealed envelope by Price Waterhouse? We get to open it up?
That's right. No bonuses on that. All right. Yeah, just make sure we don't get phone calls, all right? All right, so 23B, let's go right to it.
Mayor.
Yeah. I move, I didn't say yeah. Vice Mayor minus.
I move for the reappointments of Patricia Nichols, Leanne Smithson, and Dan Porcy.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for reappointment for Patricia Nichols, Leanne Smithson, and Dan Porcy by Vice Mayor minus, second by Mr. Elfree. Discussion?
Mayor, it's out of order. You don't have to second. It's just you nominate, and that's it.
When I appoint, we are reappointing. That does require a second, right, Ms. Weiser?
Does it?
When you reappoint. It's when you nominate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so those
And corrected.
Okay, no problem. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if we can just circle back and get a final vote on, get a final tally.
Yeah. So, right before item 24, we'll just, we'll stop at, and wait for the tally.
This is where we have karaoke.
Yeah. Have a laptop. All right. Manual. Let's just hope that we can do five and two alternates, right? Nothing, this is it. And Debbie, you're, you're about like, I was reading yours and going, what?
Okay, so the regular members of the board, it's going to be Joy Morris. She received seven votes. Randall Parkinson, six votes. Bo Platt, six votes. John Shepherd, six votes. Dan Dan Waltering, six votes. Those are our five regular members. Our two alternates will be, um, John Windsor will be the first alternate with five votes, and Don De Frisco will be the second alternate with four votes.
All right.
And then the, who each council member actually voted for will appear in the minutes.
Okay, so at this point, um.
You have your board.
I have my board. So that's all, we don't need a motion. This is it.
I think we need a motion based on the vote.
No, I think you're good as long as you had the vote already.
Okay. All right, very good.
So if council's okay with that outcome, that's our board.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a board. Very good. All right, item number twenty-four, Discussion of City Council Ethics Policy. This is requested by Councilmember Elfry. Elfry, you're on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. No homework here.
You said no homework. What's this?
No, no homework here.
Holy moly.
All right. But I, tonight I want to start a, a discussion on council ethics policy. Um, as you know, Melbourne doesn't have any kind of policy on ethics. Uh, we, we rely on the Code of Ethics from the state of Florida and Florida Chapter one twelve. As a public op, a public office is a public trust, and I respect my fellow council's opinion, though I don't always agree. I also rely on my fellow council members and our professional staff for accurate and honest information. It's also my responsibility to inform all you board, all the board, um, on issues that I find that relates to city business so you can make your own accurate decision. I take my oath of office seriously, and I take public trust seriously. Um, I also take violations, or even what appears to might be a violation, or can be interpreted as a violation. And I think we can all agree that the problem that we, we're seeing a lot is people just throw ethic complaints at people through the state, and whether they're valid or not. And it's almost like, I got you. Um, and I'm trying to get away from that. Now, one of the issues that, you know how I feel about the Honor America issue and, and what's gone down, and I won't address that, but clearly we have another issue that we need some resolution on, that we can hopefully do here and not at the state level. Um, in your packet is the Florida Commission on Ethics, the guide to the, uh, Code of Ethics, and also bo, a board minute meeting at the very back from March twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. And that's really.
What page?
It's on the very back.
It's a separate page.
Okay, very bad. And, and this could be mere perception of something that, that doesn't look right, and we're gonna fix this tonight. Um, if you look at the board minute meetings here, and this is from Honor America and President Moore's, uh, President's Report, I mean, she does, discusses a developer who offered to pay for doors, and that's on a city-owned building, and that he would be pursued for a possible sponsorship and endowment during the same time that he's given two-point-four million dollars in CRA tip money. I, I, I'm not here to say that was wrong, or, but the mere perception of it doesn't look right. And what I'm asking my council is that if we can't rely or be on the same page here on this council, we need to, we need to have a discussion on a policy where I still find it very highly inappropriate for someone to sit on a board that receives money or a lease or something while they're sitting on this board. Um, as you do know, back in, um, back in May twenty-second, I asked Councilwoman Moore to step down from Honor America, which she refused. I think, uh, Mr. Thomas asked, which she refused. But the board minute, minute meeting for February, March, she discusses what clearly could be a problem with her seat for sitting on that board. And, and I, I don't know what the disconnect here, but I'd like to have some discussion on, do we need some kind of policy? Or, or some kind of ordinance that, so there's this perception that a developer is getting a benefit, which I don't think he deserves that. The man looks like a hard-working man and, and kind of reminds me a lot of myself, working seven days a week. And I don't think he needs to be pursued for anything why, why he's put, he's being asked, well, he's putting doors on a city building or, or being pursued for a sponsorship, for a five-oh-one-C-three. I think that's very inappropriate. I really do. So I'd like a discussion with the council. Do we feel we need some kind of ordinance for this? Uh, 'cause the only other route is up to the state level, and I don't think we, I think, I'd like to resolve it here. I think the council was right earlier. If we can resolve here, let's resolve stuff here. So can I have a discussion on this?
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Thomas.
Uh, Councilman Elfry, what, do you have something in mind as far as a, a policy that you would think would be, uh, something that we'd be able to implement here? Do you have something already in your head that?
Well, yeah, that, that if you're sitting on council, you cannot sit on another board that receives money or a lease from the city. Doesn't mean you can't be a member, or you can't be an honorary member, or something like that. Something where you don't have, there's no voting conflict. Because I think if you go through the, uh, Commission on Ethics, the documentation, I, I highlighted it for everyone. I mean, you could clearly make an argument to the state that there are improprieties here, and, and, and I don't think that, probably I don't think that might not be it, but we, you know, we gotta police ourselves. So I thought maybe, you know, that we, we make, make that kind of motion, or, or again, discussion from the council.
I thought that if you're sitting on a board, that you couldn't ask money from the City of Melbourne, but you could ask from developers, business owners, or anyone for donations. I mean, that was my impression.
Even during the time they're getting a, they're doing business with the city? Within the same week?
My gosh, if that's the case, then I won't be asking a lot of people for donations for parades and veterans' parades. I would have to, wow, this will really have to be looked at.
Well, and that's why I figure we'd have a discussion to say, you know, in what capacity would you be sitting in?
Well, um, that's a good question. There are times they ask me to sit on a board and, and, um.
As a voting member?
Yeah.
And do you do that?
Um, well, I had to withdraw from the, uh, Homeless Coalition because, uh, Vice Mayor Thomas, uh, Vice Mayor Minus sits on the board. So we didn't want both of us on the same board discussing.
Now, what do they get receiving from the city?
They, in the future, you'd never know. I mean, you know, grants and aid is a possibility that they would ask. So, I mean, this is really sticky.
Madam Mayor, you're not sitting on any board that's a five-oh-one-three-C board, right?
Uh, yes. Well, I was.
But you're not now.
I am now until I give them a letter to withdraw. But, um, yeah, it's the Homeless Coalition.
But you're, you're not asking the City of Melbourne for any, any money, so.
Not right now. But, well, you know what, if, uh, the street to home is on, it, oh, okay. So.
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Thomas.
I have something just to put out there. Um, I like that you did your homework and did all this information. This is great information. If we know what's gonna be going on the agenda in the future, I would just request, I don't think any motion or anything needs to be made, just request, maybe this could be included in our packet work, because I would have loved to, like, especially the Florida Commission of Ethics, this whole thing right here. I would have loved to be able to go through the whole thing and, and read it, you know, word for word on it before having this conversation, just so I was acclimated to it. Um, so the only thing I would ask, if we know of any council members, whether it's this or anything else, and it's something that we want to bring up in discussion item, and it's gonna go on the agenda, maybe we could forward this stuff, you know, to the city clerk ahead of time and make sure that it gets put into our packet so that when we are discussing it, we sort of have a little bit of information. To do so, because like, without reading this and reading, going over it, I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying. I totally understand, I totally get what you're saying, but I also think that there are certain situations here where things might conflict, but may not be a conflict of interest. So if that's the case, I would have liked to have read this over, really read this over, to see if that would help clear that up in my own mind.
Well, well, I will say that's actually available online, and, and this was on the agenda for, uh, ethics, and this is something that we're, we all, this is something that, from the, even the Florida League of Cities, that's something that we're all, all even trained in.
Right.
But, uh, and again, and I, and I understand and I respect that. That's why we can always say, hey, we'll bring this back and think about this. And, and again, we don't have to make a, a movement or a motion tonight. But then again, I, I do want to bring, uh, again, one of the biggest issues that you have now are people are just throwing ethic complaints around, and I don't think that's where we need to go. But we, there has to be some kind of guidelines, because you do not need to be asking for a developer for sponsorships and donations when he's getting, he's coming before the board and it's not even disclosed. That's inappropriate. I really feel that's inappropriate.
Now, personally, I thought you were gonna bring back information of what other cities are doing as far as policies, not the state. You know, that's what I was thinking. There are cities that have done, um, ethics within the city, so that's what I thought you were gonna bring back, so.
Well, the city attorney, actually, we had a discussion. I mean, she even mentioned that, uh, that there are, you know, there's some, I guess, down south that are, have, they have real stringent rules, and I'm not saying that that's where we want to go, or, you know, handcuff us, but again, a lot of times it's a perception of, of, you know, impropriety, and, 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 well, again, we're in a public trust, and we here, we have to police ourselves.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Thomas.
And, and I'll agree with, uh, Councilman Elfry, the perception of what took place with, uh, Mr. Zimmerman does, does just not look right. And again, we just, as city council members, we just have to be mindful and kind of have some cultural competency as far as where we're at on this board. Um, and also that, um, you know, use a little common sense. I mean, obviously, you know, he got the CRA, uh, award, two-point-four-million-dollar taxpayer dollars. So obviously using him, uh, to help out with the museum, or to pay for doors, or whatever the case may be, that just doesn't look right. And so we're, we're kind of our own worst enemy. Um, and so, uh, because perception is reality, and there's perception of, uh, uh, of that not being kosher. So I, I agree. I'd like to have this, uh, ahead of time, too, so we can look at it a little bit more and come, come up with a, you know, a plan of, of what we can do to address a, an ethics policy here. I think you're right on the mark. We need to have some type of ethics policy that we implement here for, for the city. I agree.
Mayor.
Can we, oh, can we look at other cities and what they've done instead of reinvent, reinventing the wheel? Let's find out what other cities are doing?
Yeah, I.
Uh, Ms. Lopez.
Yeah, I also wanted to say the fact that, um, there's a council member who is, uh, on a board that's receiving a lease for a dollar instead of the market value of the property. That's a gift and kind, actually. So that person is actually getting a donation from the city. So that has to be looked at, too. Because when we do our, uh, campaign, uh, forms, uh, we do include gifts and kind if we get service free of charge. So I think we do definitely have to come out with, uh, something, uh, dealing with ethics and being a council member.
You know, Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Elfry.
You brought up, you know, a good point. I mean, you did, and you said, you said, well, you know, I sit on this board, and we may be asking for money or whatever, which we may. I almost think it would be wise for the council person to go, I can no longer sit on your board, because we have multiple groups coming and asking for money. And next thing you know, you have all these boards saying, I want the council person on my board, because that might give us an edge to get city money. And I almost think, again, and Councilmember Thomas, that we're our worst, own worst enemy. I almost think it would say, it would do us well to say, you know, if we are on your board, you cannot go in front of the city and, and, or, you know, or you cannot vote on it. I mean, that, that could be, that could be a disclosure. Hey, disclosure, I'm a board member, I can't vote on it. And that would be, that would be fine. That's something that we could, but I think we do need to tighten it up. I mean, with what I've been seeing, we need to tighten this up and, uh, move forward and police ourselves. 'Cause we either handle it here, or we go to the state level, and I don't, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay. So do we just wanna kind of, what do you want to, uh, Ms. Thomas? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Minus.
My, I, I agree with, um, um, Councilmember Thomas, um, that had, uh, we had all of this information. Yes, granted, we all went to the ethics class, and we all know what we're supposed to do and should be doing. Uh, but had we had this and knowing, um, that this was gonna be the topic of discussion um, for the third, fourth, fifth time, then maybe, you know, we could have been more abreast or couldn't know what's going on. Um, this, this seems to be a topic of conversation or of our discussion every meeting. Um, and it, it needs to be put to rest. I don't know if it's a witch hunt. I don't know what it is. But, um, it, it, we need to get a, a resolution to it, and, and had we had this information. I'm looking at the item two, twenty-four says, Discussion of City Council Policy Requested. I'm thinking that it was gonna be something for, uh, the city council to discuss, not that we were gonna have another witch hunt on a, on a, a, a fellow member.
How, how are we having, how is this a witch hunt?
I do have the floor, please.
Yes, that's right.
Um, to have this addressed, you know, um, at a later date.
Ms. Thomas.
Um, I would say that, um, considering we have brought this issue up quite a few times, um, I wouldn't be opposed to the city attorney, um, looking at, at, at some of this and, and looking at other cities and what other cities have done. Um, I think that it's been shown that many council persons, whether it's here or in other cities or in the county, um, they do sit on other boards other than just, just these boards. And, and I think it's, it's giving back to the community, and I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. However, you know, maybe the clear rules need to be put out there and put in writing that, that, you know, if there's an issue where they're gonna come before the city and they're going to be asking for a certain amount of money or whatever, that you do have to make sure you recuse yourself and that you take yourself out of it, or you yourself are not requesting it, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I would agree that those, those would be, um, good things to have in policy and, and written down. So I guess I would ask that the, uh, attorney look into this for us, maybe, and bring us back some suggestions.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so is that a motion, Ms. Thomas?
Sure.
All right.
No discussion.
Yes, I got a second by, um, Vice Mayor Minus in discussion.
Okay, um, I don't see how this is a witch hunt. As I stated before, that I'm not saying anything was wrong. A lot of time it's a perception. Uh, I did meet with the city manager on this, and we discussed this. And he said, and he even said, you know what, then bring something on regarding ethics. And we're in the sunshine, and we're having this discussion. This is not a tack on anybody. Um, but I, I think there needs to be clarity here, and we need to be on the same page. I'm not here to make friends. Okay, I'm here to work for the taxpayers, and if I hurt somebody's feelings, that's too bad. But there is no witch hunt here. And again, I don't, again, I will say it publicly, I'm not saying there's anything inappropriate here, but it doesn't look right. It does not look right. And this could have been resolved a long time ago. But go ahead, Ms. Dolly.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Dolly.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing is that, um, you want me to look into how other cities define their ethics policy, kind of give you, uh, some choices. But what I, what I hear is the big difference compared to what might be required at the state level, because we can't take away the state's authority, right?
Right.
But, um, is a disclosure element. So that when, uh, Mr. Elfry, correct me if I'm wrong. So the idea is that if a vote comes up and you've had some kind of contact with whoever the applicant is, that that get disclosed, whether it's a conflict or not. Just the fact that it's put out there, everybody gets on the same page as to what the relationship is, then you have a higher level of comfort going forward?
Don't we owe that to the taxpayers?
I, I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying, is that what I'm hearing? Is that what you want me to research and, and see what I can find?
Well, and, and I met with you on this, too, so this is no secret or no surprise. And you did make a lot of good points that, you know, there's also the enforcement issue, and there's a lot of issues on that. So my whole idea was to bring this in front of council.
Right.
And then us discuss it, and we can bring this back at some other time.
And that's my, I'm just trying to identify the direction that you want to go. So the direction is to figure out what other cities are doing and to explore a level of enforcement that isn't necess, that doesn't involve this whole investigation arm that the Commission on Ethics does, but to require people to disclose.
Sure.
Like if they're sitting on boards and, maybe, okay.
Yeah, we'll see what other, I'll see what we can find with other cities.
We'll never volunteer on a board.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Talk, uh, Mr. Thomas, sorry.
We look alike.
No, you don't. No way.
Just kidding, just kidding.
I know, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I, I appreciate Council, Councilmember Elfry's initiative, and I really think this is something that would really help us in the long run. Uh, if you look. If you look around, what's going on within our state, within our county, there's lots of investigations going on.
A lot?
And I think this will, this will help us, and, you know, make sure that, you know, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and not to put ourselves in situations where we might be perceived as being compromised. So I think it's something that's good, that's needed, and I look forward to working on this in the future.
Okay.
And one more thing to add, Mayor?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, Ms. Dolly did indicate that it was not her job, or the city manager's job, to tell us where there was an issue when it comes to disclosure, or ethics and such. So that's kind of our job, so it's kind of put on us. So, I think it's a good idea, again, that we police ourselves, and we move past this.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second?
Yes.
So those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. All right. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications, do I have any?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas.
Mayor, I got a question, and I don't know, it may be the attorney and the city manager can help me out. The appraisal that we're working on right now, is this an annual requirement? Why are we doing this right now, is the question that I have?
I believe my contract with the city refers to an annual evaluation, and it's not something that's been done in my, in fact, this is the first month of my sixth year, so I just finished five years. And it comes specifically out now, because the mayor brought it forward, recognizing that the council had an obligation to do that, and it hadn't been done.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am, and with all due respect to the city attorney, and also the city manager, I will miss the deadline to have their evaluations in. There's a couple of things that are still out there, that are working, that I want to see come to fruition first, and then after that, I'll be happy to do an evaluation on them. The big thing right now is, obviously, I want to know the final outcome of the Honor America investigation, and see what the output of that is. Also, the airport travel policy, those are two big things that are important to me, that, you know, I want to see come to fruition and get accomplished. So, once those are done, then I'll be happy to complete the evaluation and get that turned in, but until then, I just don't have enough of what I've seen since I've been on council to do one.
But if we do this every year, which is what we should be doing, so that could be something you could put on next year's report. I mean, that's, that's an option.
But did y'all do a report last year? Did y'all do an evaluation?
No, we didn't. So it's time we need to do this, so, yeah. So every year, we will be doing this.
I understand, Madam Mayor, but we're just now doing this for the first time, it sounds like, for a council, so...
The new council, yeah, I kind of put it off because of the new council, and...
Okay, so when was the last time, when was the last time it was done on you guys, by Melbourne City Council? Never?
Not on Mr. McNeese, no. We did it with Mr. Schluckbeer. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I might need another two months, however long it takes, to get the results back on these things that are looming out there. I'll be happy to turn in my evaluation.
Okay, so right now, I'm going to have to have a motion. I mean, we had made a commitment to have this reports in.
Was that, was that a motion? That wasn't a motion we made?
Last time, well, I guess it wasn't a motion. It was an agreement that we would have them submit to the city clerk, I will review them, and then bring it back to council.
Mayor?
Yep. Vice Mayor Minus.
Okay, just to ask a question, if the results are not back for those two items you requested, then what, we're going to wait another two months, or are you going to put it off until, until you get what you're looking for?
Yes, yes, ma'am, fair question, because my understanding is, the Honor America investigation should be wrapping up, so we should be hearing about that any, hopefully, any week now. The same would hold true with the airport travel policy, that should be wrapping up pretty quick, but there's no way that, I see those two items being completed by the, what was the suspense, the 15th or the 20th of February, right? What was the suspense?
The 20th.
I believe it was February 22nd.
22nd.
It was the due date.
So it could be, it could be a month, you know?
Is that public knowledge that Honor America is going to be wrapping up?
No, that's not public...
That's what we've been...
That's no public knowledge. We do not have public knowledge. I don't know where that came from, but...
I'm just saying, we...
It's speculation, and...
Speculation came from somewhere, I mean, for him to make that assumption.
I don't know.
But I'm just, you know, that's just my concern, if it's not done in the two months, or whatever, if anything happens, then you're going to put it out until you get that information. But if we keep kicking the can down the road, then, you know, that can be till Christmas.
Yeah. That could be like six months.
Ma'am, what would be the issue if...
I mean, that would, that would stop his evaluation, because this report hasn't come.
Ma'am, he hasn't had an evaluation for how many years now?
Five.
So, so what's another couple of months going to mean? I mean, he's already gone five years. Granted, I agree, he needs an evaluation, I'm just saying, I want to hold off until these issues are resolved. I'll be happy to give an evaluation, him and the city attorney both.
Well, and I would say, Mayor, if we go that long, that investigation will be longer than the Blueware investigation, and that will be absolutely ridiculous. So I just want to let you know, I mean, it could be, you know, it could always be two weeks, it could be three weeks, you know, who knows? You know, I did email the chief, and he said it's in final review. So that's it, that's all I have.
Mr. McNeese, did you...
Go ahead.
Or...
I'll wait my turn.
I just want to assure the public that whether I have a review or not, has no bearing on my incentive for how the Honor America Police Investigation goes. And I'm, if you choose not to do an evaluation, that's fine, but I think it's important to distinguish that the outcome of that investigation doesn't give me an incentive to do or not do something. I think that's a really frightening thing to tie together.
Yeah, and I think you're being defensive, that wasn't implied. I'm just saying, for things that are important for me, for completing an evaluation, those are the two things that have to be done for me, for me to be able to do a fair, a fair assessment. That's all I'm saying. And I'm sorry you took it that way, it wasn't meant to be that way, but I'm just saying, those are the two things that are hot, as far as I'm concerned, that need to be done before I can give an evaluation. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. McNeese? Mr. McNeese?
I guess I agree, I would say, echo what Allison just said about, this is all up to you. This is a contractual obligation that the council is supposed to tell me once a year, how am I doing? And now, you all are pretty good about telling me how I'm doing, positive or not so positive, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, we all talk to each other, and so I don't, I can't sit here saying I don't have any idea what you think about how we're doing, because I do. But the thing that's of concern to me at the moment is, I want to be evaluated not only on things I'm responsible for, but things I have control, some control over. And whether or not, well, and first of all, there will always be some sort of item still in the air. The day I stop juggling, I'll probably retire, because I won't have a job anymore. It's just the nature of the work. There is always something, there is always a ball still in the air. But what I'm really concerned about is, let's take the airport travel policy, it is completely out of my control, whether Mr. Donovan ultimately agrees with the things that the city attorney is working on writing, to make a travel policy that works within your parameters and meets his needs. And if he decides that doesn't work, I have no control over that whatsoever. Now, I feel good about the direction we're going, and I think we'll get there, but I don't control that. And frankly, that's not on my, in my scope of work, that's in his. And as far as the Honor America investigation is, that's an investigation of a grant that was given to a private not-for-profit agency, how that money was dispersed, and to private parties, and I'm really not a part of that, that's not a city investigation, that's been conducted by the Sheriff's White Collar Crimes Task Force, I've given my statements to the investigator, and I'm not, I'm concerned about what that has to do with my performance anyway, because I certainly don't control any of that at this point. So, again, y'all can do what you want to. You're the council, you're the boss, you can do it or not do it, and frankly, I'm just as happy to never have one, because I've seen them become a political circus in the worst way. And so, and I've been through it, and I'll show you the whip marks from it. And it's really no fun to be in our position and have to go through that. So, I'm just, I want to express those concerns, there will always be balls in the air, judge me as harshly as you wish on the things that I have some control over, and, you know, you and many of us have already spoken in a lot of these things, I guess I just, I've said those things.
All right, so, okay, Mr. Alfred.
And real quick, to reiterate that, I did meet with a city attorney and a city manager on the performance evaluation, and I made it clear that there's things that I would like to see get wrapped up, which they agreed, and that when I completed, it would be on stuff that they had control over, and when the stuff, when the other stuff come back, if it came back unfavorable, then there would be an addendum to that, to, you know, but I would say that, I appreciate them, you guys meeting with me, and there will always be, what I said before, something on fire. And we need to take that in consideration and move forward. And juggling, good juggling.
Hopefully, none of the balls are on fire, they're in the air, but hopefully, none of them are on fire.
All right, so, all right, so I think we should go ahead with what we plan on, and just turn in the evaluations, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
And if you don't turn it in, you don't turn it in. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
No.
Seeing none, meeting's adjourned at 9:11. Thank you, everyone.
Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow.